Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the March Work Session of the Cobb School District. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Will you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we have one speaker for public comment, Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We, how many minutes can we allot for a public comment this morning?
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Our first and only speaker is Connie Jackson, who will discuss SPOLOST 5.
Superintendent, there's been a lot of talk about SPOLOST 5 and the Undesignated Classroom Fund. And I want to talk about one example of why that fund is so important. Yesterday, against the wishes of the Cobb School Board and the district, the zoning commission passed through a 105 housing development in West Cobb. This development would be zoned for Dewest Elementary and Lost Mountain, both of which are already over capacity. This is just one of several housing areas that are going up in West Cobb at an alarming rate. We have been, as a West Cobb resident myself and parent, we have been alarmed by the rate that they are throwing up housing developments in our area. And most of our schools are already over capacity in that area. And we think that within four, five years, when SPOLOST 5 will be really up and running, that we are going to be seriously over capacity at the majority of our schools. And this is why the Undesignated Classroom Fund is so, so important, that we are going to need it in a lot of our schools over there. We already are designated for several classroom additions at some of our schools, but there are some that aren't, particularly if you look at Dewest Elementary. It's an older school. It's going to need not only renovations, but it's going to need additional classrooms. So we're asking everyone that we need to pass SPOLOST 5 with the Undesignated Classroom additions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the February 6, 2016 called meeting and the February 16, 2017 board meeting. And if there are no objections to approval, all right, they are both approved. Now we are ready to hear board business, and I'll begin with Mr. Morgan, the subject of standard communication/feedback survey for open houses.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, brothers. Good to see you, man. Haven't seen you since y'alls today. I want to bring before the board and superintendent and his staff an idea about having a universal standard in our schools when it comes to communications, not only for open houses, but also for parent-teacher conferences. Right now, from feedback that I have gotten from a few parents, they said, "David, when my child was at one particular school, I felt like that particular school, when they had open house, parent-teacher conference, it was more like going through the motions. I just want to do it to say we did it, get it out the way." And they said, "Well," and then when I went to another school, she said, "I was taken aback with how well it was, how it ran, and it seemed like the principal and the teachers were invested in us coming in the building and getting our feedback." And that got me to thinking that one of my mantras is, "Quality should not be determined by geography. It should just be quality, whether you're in West Cobb, South Cobb, East Cobb. It should be quality." And I know that's a high threshold, but that's what we're in the business of doing. And one example, I want to brag a little bit, a little bit, if you don't mind, Mr. Wheeler, about one of your schools. You represent Kemp, right? This is actually what the parent sent me. It's two pages. It's two pages. Email to me and said, "David, I was just so, I was so elated that I really felt invested in the parent-teacher conference at Kemp Elementary." And this is what goes to every single parent at Kemp kindergarten through five. And as you could see the questions, "Was I provided relevant information regarding my child's academic progress this year? Was I given an opportunity to ask questions regarding my child?" I feel like that should be the standard at every school, not some here, some there. One of the things that I really admire about what our superintendent has done is that when it's come to what we're going to teach literacy, you know, it was a bunch of stuff. Everybody just kind of throwing stuff together. But we have created a standard of, hey, this is how we're going to go about our business when it comes to literacy and computation. So what I want to close with is, what do we have to do to create this type of standard throughout our district when it comes to open houses and/or parent-teacher conferences? Because one of the best ways to improve is by getting solid feedback from the people that you're serving. When you stop getting, when you stop getting feedback from people you're serving, there's going to be stagnation and there's going to be regression. So I wanted to put that out and get feedback as to how we might be able to accomplish this across our district.
Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Mr. Morgan, it's not very often, as you know, that you bring up something and we just like, "This is awesome."
Right.
But, that being said...
Yeah, I see that, right?
He's telling them.
So, exactly, exactly. So this one, though, we've discussed it, and it's a great idea. I mean, there's nothing wrong with this. And certainly, we want to be consistent in our communication, you know, from the school/school district to parents. So we've already talked about how to implement basically a customer feedback survey for customer service. But we're also looking at several of executive cabinet members and myself set in, and we're going to be implementing a proof of concept for a different form of electronic check-in for both volunteers that come to work at schools and also visitors that come to work at schools. And one of those features, as we saw in the demonstration, was the ability for, in a large, like an open house type of situation, parents can check in ahead of time. So they can do it via email, or they can, with their phone, they can bring in their phone that has a QR code on it and check in just by holding it up to the screen kind of stuff. So it's not something, because obviously, we don't want to have, you know, 200 parents standing in line to check in to get into open house. That's not something we want to do. But one of the major benefits is twofold. One, we are able to get an email address from parents to be able to communicate more readily through electronic communication, but also be able to submit a survey like this electronically. Because we all know, if we get a piece of paper, the effort to fill it out, get it back to where it needs to be, is going to be a lot less probability of getting a high rate of return versus an electronic that somebody has signed up for and gets and can take a couple of minutes and fill it out and shoot it back. So we are definitely moving in this direction and think it's a good idea. But also, I wanted to let you know and let the board know, the proof of concept that we're looking at doing at a few schools for this second semester and coming up. So hopefully, we'll have the proof of concept in place for the start of school and hopefully have a little bit more proactive information that I can bring to the board and let you know kind of what we're doing.
Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, and good morning. And thank you, Mr. Morgan, for bringing this to the forefront. But I would like to pay the staff a compliment in that this has been ongoing, where we're looking for customer-oriented ideas and also even with our employees. So oftentimes, I think our schools are doing good things and they just keep on doing it and don't realize that if they would share at the leadership conferences and things like that, that they would be good ideas. But I give a shout-out to Ms. Stoddard and to Mr. Adams, Dr. Daniels, and Dr. Davis, Ms. Davis. But anyway, every time I ever call them about a customer issue, and it's a teachable moment, they take it and run with it. And that's the kind of atmosphere that they've been fostering along with the superintendent's leadership. Not trying to make points, I'm just trying to let the public know what we, as a district and as an organization, have been doing for the last two and a half, three years. And I like the idea, too, for what it's worth. But thank you for continuing what we're trying to build here in Cobb County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Scamahorn. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, Mr. Sweeney.
First of all, Dave, great, great suggestion, and superintendent, I appreciate your comments. There's an interesting thing, and you mentioned the QR code. So, you know, that presumes that individuals are going to go ahead and type in their name, address information, and that kind of stuff. I know at the elementary school level, when it comes to the first day of school, the level of paperwork that the parents have to fill out is astounding. And many of them have basically made the comment, "Is there a way that we could streamline this?" And I think your suggestion about using that QR code, if there's a way to integrate that into the printing of forms at the elementary school level, might be something to kind of speed up the process. Because I know a lot of parents are, I mean, I hear it all the time. It says, "Shoot, is there a way to..." They're filling out the same information on, you know, and sometimes at least 10 different forms. And they're doing it during a session, and it's taking time away where they could actually have more engagement and more interaction with the teachers. Yeah, definitely. We're moving down that path. And this proof of concept, one of the benefits of it, of us looking at a system like this is not only to be able to better track those people that are coming into our schools during the day, but also be able to pull data out of that system to be able to share and go back and forth with student information system and electronic forms. Moving down that path, because, you know, the student folders that we send out to every student, you know, at the beginning of the year, has a lot of paper in it. And that requires time from our parents. So we're definitely looking at that.
Yes, Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To add on to Mr. Sweeney's point, it would be helpful, I think, to consider pre-registration online, putting that capability in so that when they get there, they either have a printout or the staff has a printout of the data they've already submitted. And so all they got to do is basically just sign. So I would recommend we take that in consideration, a pre-registration type situation.
That's actually what I was trying to describe. I didn't do a good job of it. But that would be a pre-registration that would be emailed to the parents before open house. So when they come in, they could have a printout of the email, or they can just have it on their phone with the QR code, and you just hold it up and you're signed in. So you don't even have to sign. You just basically scan that QR code from the email you've received, and then you've signed in. So then at the end of open house, then that email address that's registered and has attended would then get the customer service feedback survey.
This would eliminate a lot of the paperwork that the parents are having to fill out on-site.
That would be the first step. This particular proof of concept won't eliminate the paperwork, but it's basically aimed at the customer service feedback. Taking it to the next level is developing the systems that can incorporate those QR kind of codes and electronic form documentation to move us forward in that area.
You understand what I'm thinking, that, you know, let's speed up the process.
Absolutely.
Because a parent can do it at their leisure and have it ready, and just feed it into the system, and whenever the meeting is, the staff could just print it out.
Absolutely.
And it's already there.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that sounds, Mr. Morgan, have we addressed the issue? All right, and so my understanding is, we will have this ready to roll out this next school year. And will you be able to, or some be able to, give us a follow-up or a rollout kind of plan?
Absolutely.
Right before?
Yeah, we'll do the proof of concept, and then we'll bring the report, the board, a report on the proof of concept and what the implementation plan will be moving forward.
All right, that sounds good. So now, Mr. Braggsdale, we're ready for your report. I'm sorry, I thought we were talking about both. All right, go ahead. Mr. Morgan, let's see, yes, student conferences.
I'm reading what Brett wrote. He writes like a paragraph over you. I'm like, "Just say it to him, yeah." Concept is student conferences. So one of the things that's, I think all of us can agree on, or most of us can agree upon is, when you look at the dynamic of parent engagement and involvement, you see it more concentrated in our elementary schools for our children. Then it slacks off in middle school, and then high school. Unfortunately, too many parents just say, "Y'all, y'all, just, you know, navigate it yourself, and I'll check in when it's time for you to graduate." And I feel like that's a huge disservice for everybody, the ripple effect of that. And again, talking to parents, I was talking to some parents, involved, engaged parents, and they said to me, "David, you know, one of the things that I have a challenge with is in middle school, we block out time for parent-teacher conferences, weeks and things of that nature." Now, let me preface that by saying, I know logistically, middle school, high school, different things of that nature. So I'm mindful of that. But they said to me, in this particular parent, children attend Pebblebrook High School. Said, "But David, from the time my child left the eighth grade, until he became a junior, there was no school-initiated program." And when I say "program," it's probably not the best usage of a word in the sense of like an open house, teacher conference, things like that. He said, "Everything was initiated by me," in terms of engaging about my child, which is commendable. But it also made me think about this, board. I feel like ninth grade is a crucial, crucial year, starting off your high school education, career. I think that because that's such a nexus or intersection for most of our children, all of our children, I want to know the feasibility, Ms. Superintendent, whether it's proof of concept or something of that nature, that we put something in place for our ninth graders, whether it's parent-teacher conference or something that is, that's a stable, so to speak, that gives parents and teachers the opportunity to interface. Because right now at Pebblebrook, from having spoke to their parents and having spoke to the principal, their next formal thing is 11th grade, road graduation. So you go from the eighth grade to the 11th grade with pretty much nothing. And I think that we can improve upon that when it comes to parent-teachers interfacing. Because from what I understand from the principal and from the parents, yeah, I can initiate something, but there is nothing system, there's no school-wide open house, I mean, something like open house when it comes to parent-teacher conferences. And I was wondering if we can in some way, shape, or form make that happen for ninth graders since it is, you know, it's that year of transition, and we want to do all we can to get our children off to a good start.
So in preparation for this, I asked Ms. Stoddard, because, you know, it's kind of one of those things where anecdotally, you know, you kind of think you have an idea, but, and I don't know what the answer is going to be, but I asked Ms. Stoddard to get with the Level Assistant Superintendents and also principals to figure out, okay, what do we have so we can let you know, let the board know what we have in place currently, and then kind of what a path moving forward would be. So, Allison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. I did talk with Mr. Wagner and Philip Page, and also Mr. Downs, since he's our newest Assistant Superintendent who just left a high school. Specifically, to answer your question regarding Pebblebrook, if they did not do the parent conferences, they will be doing ninth-grade advisement conferences in the fall. It is our practice in Cobb County, and there's four different levels. In ninth grade, we begin what we call an individual graduation plan, where parents and the ninth graders come in and meet with their counselors and do what we call an individual graduation plan, and also participate in the career cruising. Parents are highly encouraged to attend those meetings. And then in 10th grade, the career cruising continues. Counselors go into the individual classrooms and work with the students. Now, at the 10th grade level, at any time, a parent can ask for a conference. And I agree with you, Mr. Morgan, in elementary school, and that was my background, we counseled all the time. We had our two conference weeks. Now we're down to one, same as middle. But we continually work with parents. In 11th grade, it's mandatory from the state that, and it's called junior counseling, with the student and the parent. And it's approximately a 20 to 30-minute career counseling. Where are they in their graduation plan? And several of the high schools that I spoke to in the past week even offer those before school and at night so that they don't pull teachers out of classrooms during the instructional day. It's not standard across all 16 high schools as to when they do those sessions. But, and then in 12th grade, of course, we focus on with students and their parents who are behind in their graduation plan. I know that all of our eighth-grade schools do articulation plans, where we have our freshmen even come to the eighth grade, or our eighth graders go to the high schools. So we'll be working with, to follow up, to make sure that this is happening, but...
Okay, Ms. Thayer.
A hundred years ago, when I was principal at Pebblebrook, we did require, it was a school-based decision, but we basically required that parents come in because we would say, "We're about to plan your child's career in high school, which will determine where they can go beyond there. And we can't do that without your input, so you must be here. And if it takes my staying until eight or nine o'clock at night, I will do that, but we have to have you here." So I think sometimes you can make that effort, and you may not get every one of your parents, but you'll get most of them. So generally, that's what high schools do. But there is a conference, and there always has been, because you have to prepare. You have to know where that child and where their parents expect that child to be at the end of high school. And you can't do that alone, you know. So those pathways, if you put a child on the lower track in math and the parent thinks he's going to MIT, you know, we have a real disparity here. So you have to have that input from the parents in those conferences.
Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for some clarification, do we still do the aptitude testing in the eighth grade to kind of determine what kind of path a student needs to be on? And if so, how do we convey that information to the parents?
Mr. Banks, yes, there is actually the administration of the PSAT 8.9 for all of our eighth graders, which produces a very rich collection of information regarding student skills and gaps as they enter ninth grade.
Do we do that at every middle school?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you said the PSAT?
Yes, sir.
Used to be Ready Step, and now it's called PSAT?
Yes, sir. Previously referred to as the Ready Step Assessment, now the PSAT 8.
Okay, now, the second part of my question was, how do we convey that information to the parents?
Each of the students who participate, every eighth grader is participating in a PSAT administration in eighth grade in the fall. It produces an individual student report that is provided to the parents and sent home to the parents regarding the student's performance on that PSAT assessment.
Okay, so the parents are made fully aware of the aptitude, potential path that their student would follow in the next four years.
Yes, sir. An individual report sent to each parent based on the results of that particular PSAT assessment in eighth grade.
Okay.
Same thing also happens in 10th grade.
So we're being very transparent?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks, and I would like to acknowledge Mr. Randy Scamahorn, who the first time met him was helping one of my students at North Cobb with advisement. Mr. Scamahorn.
It's very kind, Mr. Chair, and thank you. And actually, a great segue in part of what I was going to say, a couple things. First of all, from a practical matter, the workload of our counselors, okay? If you have 2,000 students in a high school, you have four counselors. If you do the math, that's 400, at least 400 students per counselor, okay? Now, like at North Cobb and Walton High School, and maybe a couple others that are closing in on 3,000, if you have five counselors, do the math, it's about 600 students per. We have great counselors and also great administrators, and thank you again, Mr. Chair. As an administrator, whenever I'd get particularly a ninth grader in my office, the first thing I would ask him or her is, "How's the grades?" And when the head dropped, you knew immediately why, what was going on and why. They weren't getting the academics, so they were cutting up or bothering their neighbor, or whatever. Maybe not every time, but most of the time. And I would walk them over to their counselor and say, this is what I'd say, "We're losing one." But to the credit the counselors, they're working. They're working hard. And I'm also on record as saying that if I had a magic wand and could only do one thing, I would probably add two counselors to every high school, another counselor to every middle school, and at least another one at every elementary school. But the practical part, we live in the real world, and we have to make choices. So that's the workload. We need to be careful of what we do and how we do it because of the workload and what they're already doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Anybody? Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listening to all the good feedback, I just want to make sure that I have a, I have a good grasp of what the process currently is. If my child was in the ninth grade headed to Pebblebrook High School, there would be some type of advisement for, where the counselor would bring my child in and say, "Hey, this is where you are. This is where we're headed, et cetera." Is that, is that a correct analysis?
Yes, sir. They should have a ninth-grade advisement no later than September, end of October. Mr. Scamahorn said it takes a lot of time. Mr. Page said it takes approximately five weeks to have. It's an individual meeting, and parents are invited. I'm putting my parent hat back on. I'm putting my parent hat back on from years ago, and I remember being yearly in that setting where we talked about if they're on course for graduation, and also career counseling and other options that they can do. So, and it's flexible. Their high school plan is flexible. So, yes, sir. And I will follow up with Mr. Wagner and each and every high school to make sure that we're doing that.
So, there's no doubt in my mind that that's in place. My grave concern, guys, is the execution of it when it comes to the parent aspect of it. That's what my concern is, is that, yes, you know, the counselors are getting through their heavy workloads, massive amount of kids, but my grave concern is that anything that we can do to bolster the parent also being a part of this particular meeting, especially when I'm in the ninth grade? I mean, I know that they're invited, so I'm not, but are there any avenues that we can take to make it the school-parent-student? Because from what feedback that I've gotten, at least at this particular high school, 98% of the time, it's counselor-student, parent not there, which I feel like is a fun, I feel like that's a, that part has to be there. So, is there anything that we can do, construct, throw around, throw off the wall, to figure out how we can get that parent to be a part of that conversation, especially in the ninth grade?
So, let me respond to that and say, the first thing that we need to do is, we need to accumulate the data of what the attendance is and has been for the ninth-grade individual graduation plan meetings. And if we've not kept that attendance, we will definitely start this year, and then what we will do is, we will send to the board, to all the board, the results of that data accumulation, and then we can have further conversation from there. Because I don't want to, I don't want to give down a path thinking that we've got a 30% attendance rate for parents, when it's actually 80%. And I genuinely don't know what the answer is, and I don't know if we track that. So, that'll be the, I think that's the first logical step. Let's ascertain what at 16 high schools is the attendance rate for parents at that ninth-grade individual graduation plan meeting, and then we'll go from there. But we'll send you those results, whatever they are, and then we'll tell you what the next step is.
Very good. All right, Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've mentioned before the portal that's available called NAVIANCE, and some of our high schools now are using that. And what that does is provide, starting in the ninth grade, a feature that allows the student to build their portfolio during the four years that they're there. So, when they get to their senior year, all the information they need to apply to a college or wherever they want to go to further their education is already built, and you don't have to do a lot of research and try to remember what you did in the ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade. So, that's something that some of the high schools now are already using, which is being very useful for not only the counselors, but also for the parents. The parents are very fully involved in that process. Just want to let you know that there are some opportunities out there.
And repeat the name of it again, please?
NAVIANCE, N-A-V-I-N-C-E.
All right. Does everybody else in the room understand? I mean, I had not heard of it, but I just, in case. All right, and Ms. Thayer, you had a comment.
Well, I just wanted to say and thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for, sometimes we as board members will hear from one or two parents at one school and assume this is a problem system-wide, and then come here and want something changed, and it's not necessarily. You know, so I think when we stop and say, "Then let's look and see, is it a problem? How extensive is it? Then does anything need to be done, or do we need to look at one school or whatever?" So, I appreciate your doing that. Thank you.
Anything else? Now, Mr. Morgan, are we, all right, we're good. My apologies earlier. All right, now, Mr. Rags, we're ready for your report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm going to ask Dr. Davis to come forward, and while she's coming forward, let me just go ahead and say, this is why we do what we do, all right? So, the results that you're about to hear, this is concerning the sixth school proof of concept for literacy intervention. The results are nothing short of amazing. And I know we're going to recognize, but we've got principals in the room, we've got Belinda in the room from the level assistant, superintendent level. It has truly been an example of one team, because the principals, as they can attest, this has not necessarily been easy, but the amount of work that's been required has certainly produced results that are desired. So, when we're talking about, and I'm just going to go ahead and steal the thunder before Mary Elizabeth gets there, I know she's going to get there, but I'm still going to steal the thunder. When we're talking about the kind of performance improvement at the kindergarten level, because we started this proof of concept at just kindergarten, and she'll talk about where we're going to expand that moving forward. But when the results that we have been presented, from the hard work at the schools, the teachers, the principals, at the central office, from the level assistant superintendents to academics, it's just short, nothing short of amazing, because we have literally been presented with doubling the amount of academic progress in one academic year for kindergartners. And so, when we're talking about the ultimate goal was to address students' reading on grade level, primarily by the third grade, because up until that point, you're learning to read. After that, you're reading to learn. So, the academic performance of this district, to a certain extent, can solely rely on the level of literacy our students achieve by the third grade to move forward. So, this proof of concept, and this is why we do proof of concepts, because we may think that we have got an answer, not the answer certainly, but an answer to what we're trying to address, and it may or may not come to fruition. But these kind of proof of concepts, where we're able to see what the results are, and then know that we can scale this to the district if it works, that's why we do this. But the results of this proof of concept, if this doesn't get you excited, you're in the wrong business, and you need to go work somewhere else, because this is why we do what we do. So, Mary Elizabeth.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent. Thank you for the spoiler alert, Mr. Superintendent, but I will go ahead and proceed. In October of 2016, I had the opportunity to share with the board and our community a proof of concept related to an intensive instructional model in literacy. And today, my objective is to actually provide mid-year results, so that you are confident in the way we monitor for effectiveness of an implementation. But before I get to the results, I actually want to make sure I establish the context for this work, once again, for our community, so that those watching recognize the commitment of this board and this organization to every single child's learning proficiency every single day. This begins with the superintendent's priorities, which the second priority has been to simplify and strengthen our foundation for teaching and learning in order to prepare for innovation. I think you will see evidence of how strengthening our foundation for teaching and learning is prominent in this particular articulation of a proof of concept. We also coupled strengthening our foundation for teaching and learning with the Cobb commitment to student success. I bring this back before the board and our community, because this is the promise that Cobb has made to every family in the Cobb community, that we will distance ourselves from national trends and public pressures, and we will focus on the core business of teaching and learning in this organization, with an emphasis on learning. It starts with knowing that every one of our teachers knows the standards and is teaching the standards at high levels. We are focused on engaging every child in their learning environment every single day. And as you will see further elaborated in this proof of concept, that we are committed to a balanced approach to instruction, in particular, in literacy instruction, that students will read, write, and speak to and about complex texts every day, and they will become proficient independent readers and writers at every grade level. Additionally, in this proof, in this commitment to student success, is our commitment to student progress monitoring. And let me just remind our general public that this is the commitment we have to ensure we know a child's mastery and learning, as well as their learning gaps, every day, and we adjust instruction so that learning gaps are filled quickly, and that students do not create greater and greater gaps as years progress. So, we have been on a journey to the point of this proof of concept. In 2014-15, you will remember that we introduced the Cobb Teaching and Learning System, or C T L S. This is the environment in which we are able to capture student learning data immediately, provide instant feedback to students, and for teachers to adjust their instruction in the moment. No more waiting till the end of the week, no more waiting till the end of nine weeks, let alone no more waiting till the end of the year. In 2015-16, we layered on top of C T L S a commitment to a universal screener in reading and mathematics. That was the reading inventory and the mathematics inventory administered to every single one of our students in every single grade level, starting in kindergarten and concluding in grade nine, three times a year, August, December, and end of year, April, May. Once we had data on the reading and math proficiency of our children here in Cobb County, we had to take a very intensive approach to the instruction provided to ensure reading proficiency is happening at an accelerated rate. If we know that there are great gaps in reading as students enter our schools, how are we closing those gaps at an accelerated pace? And thus was born this literacy proof of concept that has been in motion in six of our elementary school kindergarten classrooms. This is an intensive instructional model with a heavy emphasis on student progress monitoring and personalized prescriptive interventions every 10 days. So, let's take a quick look. Here are our six elementary schools that have kindergarten classrooms that have committed to this proof of concept. This means that at every single one of these elementary schools, every single kindergarten teacher and their paraprofessional are delivering the same exact instruction every single day. That's a pretty remarkable accomplishment in and of itself. The objective of this proof of concept is that students would develop reading proficiency at a faster rate when provided targeted reading instruction, consistent monitoring, and prescriptive interventions. And we committed to monitoring this through the reading inventory that is administered district-wide. It starts with a 10-day prescriptive teaching cycle. On the 11th day, there's a common assessment that is diagnosing the actual reading instruction that occurred in those 10 days. The grade level then meets as a data team to identify which students has any learning gap that requires a prescriptive intervention. And on the 13th day, the principals of each of these six schools meet with their assistant superintendent, as well as the teaching and learning team, in order to identify how do we develop prescriptive interventions for every student and prescriptive support for any teacher that needs additional resources. So, let me give you a glimpse as to how this instructional cycle is monitored. If you imagine every 10 days, there is a mini diagnosis as to whether a student has mastered that reading proficiency, and I'm going to walk you through the cycles that have just occurred. So, cycle one would have been, you know, the first 10 days of the school year. And what you see here is a quick snapshot of a lot of red. Red is not proficient. We move to cycle two, you're seeing less red. That's the second 10 days. We move to cycle three, you're seeing less red. Look at it as we get to cycle four, and cycle five, and cycle six, and I want you to focus on the colors changing to green. What you are seeing is effective instruction so tailored to a group of students that we are now needing fewer and fewer interventions because the effectiveness of the instruction in the first place. Now, I think that it's pretty profound to look at results of this nature, but really, what is behind these results? What is behind colors changing from red to green on a screen? It is one child at a time. And I just thought it was vital that you actually get a glimpse of one of the children that this data represents. And before I ask to go to the video, I'm going to introduce you to a young kindergartner at Belmont Hills Elementary School. This young kindergartner entered school for the first time in August, speaking zero English. I want you to take a look at his reading today.
I'm going to read a book named Animal Homes. Animal Homes. Animal Homes are everywhere. You can find them in trees, under the ground, and in caves. Animals build homes to keep warm and safe. Some animals build their homes in the trees. Squirrels build their homes, nests in trees. They use twigs and leaves to make their nests. Other animals build their homes in trees, too. Some animals make their homes under the ground. Rabbits dig tunnels to, in the ground, to, they use...
Now, I want to just pause for a moment, because we take for granted the ability to read. This child had no exposure to the English language six months ago. He is reading a book that is actually the end-of-first-grade level. It's a Level I on Fontes and Pennell, and our goal for kindergarten is to be at a Level D by the end of the year. This is in February, this child is reading a Level I book. This is remarkable progress. This is a reflection of incredibly dedicated teachers in every one of our kindergarten classrooms, ensuring that reading proficiency is never left to chance. I also want to mention that our focus in this instructional model has been phonics, and I credit the board for the funding of a phonics program for all of our schools, and I think that that is a very significant resource that's being leveraged in this instructional model. But phonics is not learned in isolation. Phonics is learned so that you can apply it to independent reading circumstances with complex texts. And so, what you see here is a child who's taken the very fundamental requirements necessary to read and is applying it in actually a very high-level way, and that is credit to our teachers. And so, in summary of our data from a reading inventory metric, we just looked at the 10-day cycle. Now, let's look at that reading inventory administered in August and December and end of year. By December of this academic year, each one of our six schools' kindergarten classrooms made more, 50% more progress than they had the previous year. Take a look at Green Acres Elementary School. By December, Green Acres Elementary School made as much progress as they did the entire year last year. Smyrna Elementary School made 93% of last year's entire progress by December. That means we are doubling the amount of proficiency a student is making in each one of these schools in their very first year in school. These results are exciting to celebrate, and they're remarkable, they're remarkable recognitions of the hard work of our teachers. But we've seen this story before, but I think it's important to get a glimpse into our classrooms and hear our principals talk about this work. So, let's roll that last video.
It's exciting to be able to target early literacy learning through both collaborative instructional application and timely data evaluation. This is another example of how our students and our district-level leadership are working as one dedicated team toward the goal of student success.
In the classroom, our students and teachers are highly engaged in learning to read. Our early learners are building a strong literacy foundation, while teachers, academic coaches, principals, and district leaders are working together to evaluate and monitor student progress.
It is our responsibility to look at each individual child and meet them where they are. Our teachers and leaders meet regularly to celebrate successes and address needs. This allows us to immediately and more effectively coach our teams of teachers and paraprofessionals.
Teachers and paraprofessionals can now instantly modify instruction using regular assessments that also give our students a clear picture of their own learning progress. This instructional partnership ensures that targeted strategies... This instructional partnership ensures that targeted strategies are being used consistently and applied effectively.
The internal work conducted by our data teams and led by our coaches has real impact and serves to change our behavior in the classroom. Our external collaboration with assistant superintendents directs alignment with the Cobb Teaching and Learning standards.
We have implemented ongoing training to support our teachers and paraprofessionals in this process. We are now better able to identify individual needs early in each student's learning experience and can more effectively plan and implement instruction to meet those specific needs.
The data we are collecting will continually inform and evolve best practices in balanced literacy learning throughout the district.
It has been really awesome just to sit back and watch the different departments within Cobb County schools, the teaching and learning leadership, and the actual work that's going on out in the schools. And watching us all kind of pull together, we are actually live on conference calls, looking at data, going through, determining best steps for kids, talking about accelerated interventions, like what are the things we're going to do next?
It has really been a group effort. The district, as well as local schools, have truly partnered in a collaborative, rallying together to meet our students is in some ways unprecedented. Coming together as a district and looking at that formative data and deciding what do we need to do as a district to support the principal and the school? What do we need to do to support the student? And making sure that we then come back in a few days and see how does that start looking? Um, I just think it's an incredibly exciting time.
Parents need to know that the schools are working on individual skills with every student in this district and communicating expectations with parents and providing activities to enhance reading performance.
One of the most unique aspects of this program is the collaboration between everybody. The kindergarten team, including the teachers and the parents, collaboration with the coaches. It's been great to see county people come in.
Now we have something structured and it's organized, it's interactive. We have every piece that's necessary to cater to every learning style in this new adoption. And I love it.
We can see exactly what we need to be covering with the students. We're assessing after 10 days. Uh, that gives me a clearer picture of how the students are doing, who I need to, uh, continue to work with.
You see a teacher just going there at the end of their road. And you walk into a classroom of students that you knew this teacher had scores that weren't that great the first time. However, we reassess on the second cycle. And there was a particular one in there that she came, she said, "They got it." What we saw in that moment was a teacher that felt confident about what she had done in that classroom. We saw students that were learning. And we saw students that we would have said would not have gotten it before because they were, had a label of some sort. But because we've installed, or we've put in place this frequency to sit and see my, my immediate supervisor, my superintendents, and deputy superintendents, and teaching and learning directors, and assistants at a table in a Skype session. And I can go back and tell them that. They felt like, okay, they get it. You get it. And we'll, we'll do whatever it takes at this point for mine and for students. And that's the piece for me that will get me up every morning and that will help me support this program to work through and push it as, to as many grades as I can. Because this is the piece that makes the difference.
So I know that, um, it's important for me to start articulating what we've learned from this proof of concept and how, uh, this influences decisions going into next year. We do have an expansion plan. And I, uh, want to, um, remind you that we have discussed an early kindergarten model beginning at Belmont Hills this summer that is associated with the work of this proof of concept. We plan to expand to all first grade classrooms in each of these six schools with a similar emphasis on intensive literacy instruction, student progress monitoring, and frequent prescriptive and tailored interventions. And we will begin in kindergarten at additional elementary schools, still being determined exactly which elementary schools, but it will be based on the indicators, uh, referenced on the screen. You know, I, I think it's important, um, to just take a moment because it is a tremendous honor to stand before you and have the privilege of sharing this great story with you. But this is the work of so many other people. And I think it's important to actually take a moment to reference that. You know, we are an organization that serves 113,000 children. And yet there are a group of people who know the names of every single child with any learning gap in each of these six schools. We are an organization committed to every child, and that's what this proof of concept represents. And I think this work is incredibly remarkable. Let me take a moment to start by thanking Mr. Ragsdale and your vision for reading proficiency at every grade level. You've led that work and you have made it clear to our organizations that that's a priority. This board has been consistent in not only anticipating positive results, but providing the resources necessary to put into the classroom and ensuring that we have the appropriate personnel available to do this good work in each one of our schools. Of course, this is the heavy, heavy lift of amazing school leaders that are with us today. And when I mention their names, I'm going to ask them to stand. Bertha Nelson, the principal at Belmont Hills. Cindy Swack, the principal at Fair Oaks Elementary School. Ashley Mize, the principal at Green Acres Elementary School. Jeff Mosley, the principal at Norton Park Elementary School. Doris Phillips McClure, the principal at Riverside Primary. And Brett Ward, the principal of Smyrna Elementary. We do have to pause and give them a huge round of applause. So of course, this is, uh, an incredible, uh, heavy lift because it doesn't happen without a backbone and infrastructure of teaching and learning. And I do want to make sure I recognize Missy Morris, Liz Kobia, and Courtney Jones. They are doing the instructional design, the professional learning. Gretchen Walton, Diana Denton, and Diane Rice are developing all the assessments. We're developing them all in-house. They're developing all the interventions and, um, and assisting with that prescriptive intervention. And, um, and of course, this is led by Belinda Walters Brazil and Jennifer Lawson, the two assistant superintendents who were charged with building this model and making this happen. And so let me pause and make sure we acknowledge them. Of course, that video is amazing, and that story couldn't be told without David Birch and Judy Condon. And so I appreciate their work to bring our stories to life. And, um, and Alice Stoudt, thank you for your leadership because this has really been about, uh, leveraging the partnership between two, uh, divisions. And, uh, and finally, I wish I had every single one of them here so that they could hear how enthusiastic we are. But there are kindergarten teachers who are making a major difference. Their paraprofessionals have taken on the role of an instructor, and the instructional coaches at each one of these schools are leaving no stone unturned to provide the right support in those classrooms. So at this time, Mr. Superintendent, this concludes my report, and I turn it over to you for discussion.
So let me, um, let me add to that. I mean, like I said, if, if, if you can't get excited after that presentation, um, uh, thanks to the principals, um, you know, this is, this is what it's all about. So, you know, we, we've got counselors, if you're not excited, because obviously we need to do some career counseling and find some opportunities for you. But, um, let me, let me just add to this a little bit. So the original proof of concept was CTLS. Mary Lizwith mentioned that. That was, I think the bottom line to take away from this is we're not changing the what teachers are doing. We're giving them better information on how to get down to the individual student, right? So these great teachers were doing the same work, but without the information that this proof of concept along with CTLS is providing them, they really didn't know who needed the extra help and what areas specifically to focus on for every one of. And you saw the numbers up there, sometimes 36 students. So what, what this is doing is taking that data, and you saw in the presentation, the different, the seven, uh, different steps there where you saw the red go to green. That's just a tool. But that tool is providing our teachers and principals and level assistant superintendents with the information needed to make sure that we know every student is making the academic progress that we need them to make. So that ultimately, that's going to carry into first grade, the second grade, and by the third grade. I mean, it's simply amazing in the video to see a child in kindergarten that spoke zero English and now is reading at midway through the kindergarten year at the end of a first grade year in six months. That's amazing. That's, that's what changing education is all about. Because, and let me switch on the political filter now. So there's been a lot of attention around assessments, and we test too much. Don't disagree with that, but let's categorize what we're, what, what testing we're talking about. The assessments that are part of this proof of concept, every 10 days, an assessment was given. Okay? So those assessments are guiding teachers into what they need to do to make sure gains are achieved. This is not an assessment that the state, because they want to grade schools or grade teachers. This is about student progress. Us, good assessments are required to have good teaching and learning be productive. So that's one piece. The second piece, and more recent, and we're living it today, and again, I say, I totally, absolutely disagree with the label of chronically failing schools. Do we have schools that need to improve student achievement? Yes. This six-school proof of concept is what we're doing. So when the politicians want to ask, "What do we do about these failing schools?" Well, why don't they come take a look? We can show them what we're doing. So this is not about complaining about, "Oh, we don't want to have accountability." What we're doing is showing that yes, you can take students that could not even speak English and have them reading above grade level in six months. So before people living in glass houses need to start throwing rocks, they need to start listening and looking, more importantly, on districts like Cobb that are getting it done where it matters. So again, we don't want to politicize education, but seems to be every time we hear about legislation involving education, it's negative. So I hate that I took advantage of turning this into a political conversation, but the, the bottom line is, and, and obviously, we've got Doris here, um, from Riverside Primary. Riverside Intermediate has been identified as being on the list, and I'm not going, again, use that label. But what we're doing at Riverside Primary is going to roll up to Riverside Intermediate. So what are we doing? This is what we're doing. How do we fix this is what keeps being asked at the political level. Well, maybe talking to districts like Cobb that's actually doing something about it and seeing results. You can't argue with data. You just cannot argue with data. You can argue with anecdotal, and you can argue with concepts, and you can say, "Oh, we need to do this and that, and public education is just not working." Well, you can't argue with this. So I hate to get on soapbox, but crap, it's about time somebody did. Yeah, exactly. Yeah. So, um, I, I just want to end with, I mean, you can't, you can't not get excited about the results of this. And thinking about, you know, how we, how we scale this and roll this out in a district as large as Cobb, anybody can do it. You know, if you apply the right tools and the right, most importantly, leadership, I mean, you see the principal sitting here. The, the teachers can teach, but if they don't have an environment that's being led by a strong, positive leader around leading that school, it, it's a recipe for success. So there's not a silver bullet, it's not a panacea. But we're proving you can move the needle for any student. You can't get a needle further to the left than a student that can't speak English and in six months can read above grade level. You just can't argue with that piece of data. So, sorry for the soapbox rant, but it is what it is.
Mr. Banks had a comment, and then Ms. Thayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, uh, Mr. Superintendent, I think this whole board is on your soapbox also. I want to thank Dr. Davis for presenting this concept and implementing this concept. And I'm also glad that the superintendent listened to her. I've got three basic questions. I'd like to get some better understanding of, of this, uh, program. The Reading Inventory, uh, what does that really mean? Is there certain, I know, you know, from what we saw in the video, the student was actually reading the words. So at some point, they're learning to recognize the words, but do we go further than that? Uh, uh, I'll start with that question. I got two more after this.
Certainly. The Reading Inventory at the kindergarten level is called the FRA or the Foundational Reading Assessment. It is specific to three foundational reading strands: phonological awareness, letter insight word identification, and phonics. Those really are foundational reading skills. But the instrument actually has an adaptive nature. So as a student is successful on the diagnostic, then it becomes more complex in what it's able to determine the student is able to do. And as a matter of fact, we've actually seen that through this proof of concept, students who may have had language barriers and therefore struggled to access reading are now showing their giftedness very early because we are so, uh, closely pinpointing where the student's proficiency is and how it's advancing. So over time, once you advance to first grade and second, and then through to middle school and high school, that instrument becomes more complex and can determine comprehension and fluency and ability to, um, synthesize and process.
How involved are the parents, and how much difference do you see their involvement makes? Can, can you quantify that?
That'd be, uh, difficult for me to quantify, uh, directly. But, um, what I, what I can say is that we use our report card mechanism in our early years in order to communicate the reading proficiency of every child in our organization to, uh, to the parents. And, um, and what we have committed to doing in each of these six schools is taking responsibility for those six and a half hours that the students are on our campus and ensuring that the, uh, access to text, that they're surrounded by, uh, a lot of literature, and that they're spending a lot of time reading, both independently and in guided reading circumstances, and then, um, also through direct instruction in this model, uh, that we, um, you know, we're seeing students have a lot of access to reading during the school day.
Okay. I forgot my third question, but anyway, I'll, let me make a couple of comments. We do have excellent teachers in the elementary schools, excellent teachers. And, uh, I know for a fact that you can take a four-year-old that doesn't know how to read, and maybe English is not their primary language, but in 12 months or nine months, they're reading. They, they may not read as good as a kindergarten or a first grader, but they are reading. And I know for a fact that some of them are doing math. So I see this as a, we're, we're creating a much stronger and much firmer foundation early so that when our return on investment, 12 years from now, is much greater than it is right now. So if we keep this progress and accelerate it even up to additional grades, uh, I can see a lot of payback, uh, from, you know, the students that go to Cobb County schools. And I also want to say that, uh, our administration, your support, uh, your colleagues is, 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 that's what makes it happen. Also, the, uh, uh, let me see how to phrase this. It, it's just, well, let me just stop there. We have, we have, we have so many things. Oh, I know what it was. What was the average or the basic number of students in these classes like kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and third grade?
Well, the model is only for the kindergarten classrooms currently. And, you know, we probably have between 22 and 26 kids in each one of those classes. And each kindergarten teacher is supported with a paraprofessional.
In my opinion, if we could lower those classroom sizes, we could even get better results. Uh, you know, the community needs to understand that when you've got 22 children trying to learn to read in a classroom- in a classroom, it's not easy. It's very, very difficult. If you've got 12 students in that classroom, now it becomes much easier, and you're going to accomplish more. So, we need to be, the public needs to be aware that our classroom sizes make a lot of difference in our academic achievements. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just want to say, wow, wow. Great work to everyone involved in this project. Thank you so much. I am so proud of our schools. I am so proud for you. Please, take back our congratulations to your teachers. Wonderful job. We appreciate everything that they have done to make this successful. And then to Dr. Brazil, we really appreciate all your hard work in our area. You've done a great job for us, too, in being with our schools and bringing everyone together. We just appreciate everything all of you have done to make this successful. Thank you so much. And Mary Elizabeth and Chris, thank you for everything that you've done. This is so basic. I think every high school teacher would tell you, "If you would just bring us students who can read, we'll be okay." Reading is the core. If you can't read, you can't do school. You know, that's just the way it is. So, if we could do this and do more of our concentration at this level and realize, "This is it. This is what it's all about." And when we miss this step with our students, we've missed the boat in so many things. It impacts their self-esteem and their ability to do school. So, I'm so glad that we're focused at this, and I hope that we continue this and don't lose sight of how critical it is at the earliest possible moment to really get the reading skills there as they need to be, and then they're set. So, thanks so much to everybody. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thayer. And let me kind of tack on to that because I always have to take advantage to express that when we talk about things, that we actually, we don't talk about things just for the sake of conversation, that we really believe what we're saying, and we try to put action behind those words. And I've said many times in public and to our leadership, you know, when we were talking about not getting on a fad because education is notorious as an industry for grabbing onto a fad and not knowing if it's going to work properly or work out. And I've said, in kind of humorous way, but I mean it, you know, at some point in time, some genius decided that we didn't need to have phonics as part of reading. And so, then, you know, educational organizations changed the way reading was taught, and that's why one of our priorities is to simplify the foundation, okay, of teaching and learning. So, you can see that phonics has been a huge part of this proof of concept. And so, we mean, we're not going to grab on to fads, and we're going to do what our priorities say, which is simplify our foundation. This is an example of us saying what we're going to do, but more importantly, doing what we said we were going to do and following through. And when it does produce results like this, now we have a guide, a compass, that we can scale it out to schools. Does every school in Cobb County need the same type of intervention that we have had in these six schools? No. Does every single school in Cobb County have at least one student that needs this serious level of intervention for literacy? Absolutely. So, how we scale it just inside our district is going to be school-dependent, and it's going to be up to the principal to help drive that in their school. So, when we talk about one team, this is a perfect example of that, but when we also talk about one size does not fit all, this is also a perfect example of that, of how we're going to be able to produce a solution for an issue that we have, and that's what education should be about. You know, we can't keep doing the same thing, the same way, and expect better results. We can keep doing the same thing, the same way, and expect the same results, but we can't expect better results. So, we have to provide our teachers, provide our leaders in the schools with the tools necessary to get this done. And I think this is just a perfect example of how we are putting the rubber on the road and getting it done. So, I can't say, and look, I'm not saying that from my perspective or even executive cabinet's perspective. It's where the work gets done is in the classroom, and then you go up from there. The principal provides that environment, and then our level assistants provide the leadership and the guidance for those principals in those schools. So, it is definitely a team effort and a team success in this regard. Anyone else?
Okay, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, I would be less than honorable if I did not also express my deep appreciation and inspiration for this journey. Massive success in something like education. Typically, when it's genuine and sustained, you know, it's not sexy. It's not, you know, you don't just wake up in one Tuesday, you got test scores through the roof. It is a consistent, intentional effort by keeping the main thing, the main thing, and the right people executing the main thing. So, that I most definitely want to say that I'm overjoyed with that, with the real numbers, empirical data of the quantum leaps that we're making in that regard. The question I have is this. Would you say, Dr. Davis, that if I'm a kindergarten teacher in one of the six schools that's implementing this, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at blah, blah, blah elementary school, that the kindergarten teacher in one of these six schools, would you say that their experience in administrator also is more intense, is more intense, is a greater investment to execute something like this at such a high level? That's my first question.
So, I certainly can't speak for the multiple different teacher scenarios you just drew for us, but I will, I want, first of all, we had teacher voice in the video because I do think it's important to actually hear the enthusiasm that has emerged from the teaching population who's been associated with this work. There has been a high level of investment in these teachers through the support, the resources, the professional learning, even providing time outside the classroom for additional professional learning. And I actually think that Mr. Mosley said it perfectly, that these teachers have had incredibly well-intentioned efforts in their classrooms for years, and they have been dedicated to students being proficient in reading. This unified them, brought more creative intellectual capital together to simultaneously solve for the same problem. And so, it's actually broadened their support network in this work. And I do believe that their responsibility in the classroom was very intense in the beginning, but it is now becoming the culture and the way business is done and actually becoming the envy of teachers not associated with this model currently.
Okay. I glean from that that something that Chris didn't say the actual word, but customization, that there's a customization to this if I'm at one of these six schools. And something I've long advocated, but I won't miss the forest for the trees. I won't even ask that question. I won't even ask that question. The second, actually, I will. Just can't, because I will kick myself later, like, dude, ask the question. Chris, don't get mad at me, okay? Just letting you know before I even ask. I know he knows where I'm going. Just do it, right? I'll ask it last, I'm going to make y'all wait. Is it possible, and I asked Chris this, but I didn't ask it in totally. I whispered the question in his ear. From what I've read, next steps, six schools rolling it up to first grade, correct?
Yes.
And this means, so this means now it'd be happening kindergarten and first, as opposed to just first, kindergarten and first. My question to the staff is this. What's the possibility and feasibility of adding one middle school with this same, for next school year, this same intense type of shift, for lack of a better word?
To answer your question, this is probably not the exact solution for middle school, but we are in the concept design for what the appropriate model is for middle school and a high school. We have too much information regarding student performance to not begin to articulate similarities in an intensive instructional model balanced with an intervention approach. So, I'm not prepared to articulate the details of that, but that is in a part of our work right now.
Hold on, Brad. Hold on, Brad. Last question, Chris knows where I'm going with this, is I just believe that if I, if I'm at Belmont Hills, Riverside Primary, Norton Park, and I'm a kindergarten teacher, and I'm moving the needle like this, and this is a more intense environment, I'm getting the young fellow who came in, didn't speak a word of English. Now, he's end of the first. I believe that that educator deserves customization and compensation more so than I got 22 that walked in who, you know, come from a print, and it's no fault of their own, print-rich environment, where we're not dealing with those same challenges. Use your same word, Chris, I'm off my soapbox.
Mr. Wheeler, did you have a comment?
Got a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. Where are you looking at starting a kindergarten? Where do you anticipate this ending at? Fifth grade? Or do you want to carry it on to someday? What are you?
So, the intensity of this foundation really needs to happen in the K through three years. But students, of course, move to our district and, of course, in other circumstances, start attending school later in the elementary years, that we currently have models functioning that address students who enter fourth grade but are reading on a first-grade level. What we have learned from this proof of concept is those models stand to evolve. And so, I don't think it looks quite as similar as every single kindergarten teacher in every single school following the exact same pacing and then turning around with prescriptive interventions. It now emerges into subgroups of each of those later grades where there needs to be an intensive intervention model that evolves from the current model. And that is true in middle school and in high school. We currently serve students who are not reading on grade level in a remedial-type environment, and it is not producing the accelerated results that we are experiencing in kindergarten right now. So, what we've learned from this proof of concept is that we can evolve those models. And that is future work.
Let me also jump in there, too, Brad, because when we started this, you know, and I think it was Mr. Morgan that asked, it's not like when we jump into this with literacy as the focus that we're ignoring grades four through 12. But, again, the research shows, going back to the data, the research shows that if a child is not reading on grade level by third grade, the chances of graduation and success, not just graduation, but success in four through whatever greatly diminishes. So, going based on that, this is why we started with this piece of the proof of concept, because we felt like that, yes, we need to focus on because we purchased the kindergarten through ninth grade assessment. Diagnosed it. So, that being said, though, we have to focus on K through three to make sure that we get the students on grade level by third grade. But that kind of goes back to my recipe for success where one size doesn't fit all. Just like K through three, every elementary school is not going to have and need the same methodology or the same intensive methodology for all students. The student numbers may differ and will differ, sometimes drastically. But going from fourth grade to 12th grade, we still have literacy challenges today and will. Because even if we roll this out to every elementary school next year, which we can't, so I'm not saying that, but if we did, that's only starting at kindergarten, right? So, we've got, you know, 12 more grades of students that also are in some form of need where literacy is concerned. And then, not to take away from the success of this, but then we have to focus on math, you know, because that diagnostic that we purchased is reading and math. So, you know, there's no time for us to sit back and, while we want to celebrate the success, there's no time for us to sit back and say, "Hey, we've made it," because this is an ongoing indefinite journey that will not end. We will never be where we need to be because we will always be receiving students at all grade levels, not just kindergarten, new students. But we all know how many students we've received during the year at all grade levels. We receive high school students sometimes that have never been in a classroom in any school in any way, shape, or form. And those students come to us in high school. So, obviously, there's a significant challenge, and that's a whole different topic for another day. But that's to say, we understand that, we recognize that, and we're willing to address that. But we had to start somewhere, and I think this shows we definitely picked the right place to start. So, to your point, we will absolutely be scaling it. And to your point, Mr. Morgan, middle and high school are certainly on the horizon, but in a different form. And we have to be able to scale it. And what I mean by scale it is to use your term, customize it, because we have to get to the individual student of 113,000 students at that level, and that's no small task. So, but we're up for the challenge, and we're moving in that direction. So, I hope that helps.
Yes, it does. I was interested in your looking in the future vision and possibly where you were going with implementing this across the county, not just in our, these schools, but if you were, you anticipate at the higher-performance schools, the same result coming from this?
Yeah, we do, because, again, it's not going to be the same number of students because, obviously, at a high-performance school, you have a larger percentage of those students performing at or above grade level in reading and math. But there are some students in every school that are performing below grade level in reading and math. And so, this level of intensive intervention is absolutely going to be required for some number of students. But then taking it a step back, again, the C T L S tool allows the teachers and the principals and the level assistants and the central office and me to understand how many students, who they are, what areas they need focus on, and be able to have those teachers be able to individualize that instructional plan to get to those students that need that intensive intervention.
That's good. Thanks, all. Thanks, everybody out there with the job you've done.
Mr. Scamahorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Davis, and to all the principals. This is really a great news story because when I first walked in this morning, I looked over to my right, saw my bosses. I thought I was in for a whipping. So, but thank you for all being here and to emphasize the importance of this program. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to say thank you very much for everyone's efforts. It's remarkable, and it's a fantastic, fantastic testament to the focus direction and, you know, the application of that focus to get it done. I guess the one question I have is to kind of understand if we're seeing results in other subjects as a result of these efforts, and how are we going to track that? I mean, I've long been a believer, as I'm sure everyone in this room is, read to succeed. I mean, I've long been a believer, as I'm sure everyone in this room is, read to succeed. And that foundation through, you know, grade three, as you had suggested, is really, really important, because if you can demonstrate and show efficiency and literacy by age three, it's a good indicator of your success in the future. But if there's a way for us to take a look at the dynamic between how, how are these students also doing comparatively in math, for example, and these other areas, to see if there's any, you know, rollover? And then the next thing I'd say is, what do I have to do to have that young gentleman sign up to be my sidekick for Read Across America next? Remarkable, remarkable job. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Mr. Superintendent.
Just one more comment, and I know we represented this group well in the video, but, you know, when we talk about our team, quite often, we overlook parapros. And, and you saw the parapro there in the video, the level of excitement in her voice and in her words, and obviously, at the kindergarten level, parapros are instrumental in that teacher being able to work in small groups and individually with students. So I just want to give, give a shout out and recognize the parapros, because obviously, they made a huge impact, and as you can see from the video, they have that same level of excitement and focus, to your point, Mr. Sweeney, on getting these students to be able to read on grade level.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. One thing, and this is more of a true-false question, so, all right, you and I had a conversation at one time, and I think one of the things that makes this key is that we are able to take a small group out that needs pretty much to work on some of the same things, and the parapro, is that my, or the teacher, I guess, works with the small group to get them through what they're doing as part of the larger group? Is that true?
That's a good way to articulate it. I might, I might elaborate to say that if the paraprofessional is considered an adult in the classroom, and the teacher is considered an adult in the classroom, and then you might even have an instructional coach, and I know the principals are in there a lot of times serving as an adult in the classroom, and the teaching and learning team goes in and serves in it, you can then separate students based on common learning gaps and provide very targeted instruction, and certainly, that is how the adults are functioning in cooperation with one another to serve students.
So we may not get the smaller class size likely we want, but we can, this, this system is set up to focus on a child as an individual and to administer what's needed. I think it's great, and I thank you for your, for what you've done. Is it okay with that? All right. Mr. Superintendent, we started, we started, yeah, thank you, Dr. Davis, we started promptly at 8:30, and it's now 10:02, and I would really hate to have anything interfere with the demographic studies that we want to hear about, so could we take, shoot for target, a 10-minute break, and then come back in here no later than 10:15? So we're in recess till then.
Thank you, and we are back from our recess, and Mr. Superintendent, you can continue with your report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Adams to introduce this. I know we have Mr. Wilson coming to make the presentation of the annual demographic study update. And just a reminder to everyone and as well as the board, we have embarked on a new journey as far as demographics, and we are having an annual update, and that is what this report is. Obviously, it's, it's somewhat of perfect timing as the annual update is coming right as we are having a SPOS vote. Obviously, the demographics information plays into decisions that have helped create the SPOS notebook and helped us move forward, and obviously, having real information and up-to-date information on an annual basis helps us to, again, use one of our priorities of using data to make decisions, and it's not just using any data, but accurate and up-to-date data. So, Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board. As Mr. Ragsdale referred, one of his three priorities is to use data to make decisions, but to really be actionable, data has to be fairly recent and, of course, accurate. Data can get stale, and you may recall a time in the districts past when there might have been a demographic study, but it wasn't updated on a regular basis. So in order to keep our, our data accurate and recent, we now have undertaken over the past few years, the process of updating our enrollment studies on an annual basis, and of course, that is especially important as we have prepared and continue to prepare for SPOS V. So once again, we brought in Mr. Wilson and his demographer to update our enrollment projection. The two key takeaways for you, really, without stealing Mr. Wilson's thunder, are, first of all, how accurate they have been so far, which gives us even more confidence in the numbers going forward, and then how robust and thorough their process is and how it, how it only serves to buttress what we've already done to prepare for this SPOS. So without further ado, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I may approach the board, I'll give you a handout.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, Mr. Superintendent, as always, it's a great pleasure to be with you this morning, and certainly enjoy giving you your yearly update, because it is great information to know, and it certainly supports the outstanding presentation that was just before me. What a great presentation on focusing on children and reading and improvements in education, and our side of that supports what she was sharing this morning. I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, if you will, to try to bear with me as we go through this presentation, and it may be the best for you to initially just follow me by the slides on the screen, and then I'll refer back to some of the particular pages that would be important to note a little bit later on in this. So as we start this presentation and move to the next slide, you'll see that this is a really simple slide in comparison to what we have done in the past, because what it simply tells you is that there is growth and consistency throughout our county. There is no decline in enrollments anywhere at this point. Obviously, there's a little more anywhere at this point. Obviously, there's a little more emphasis in the southern part, leading right up from the southern tip right up to the Marietta city limits. That's where our major growth is, but the entire county is very positive. So, instead of trying to outline specific areas, I thought it was good to show that the entire county has a very positive outlook. Obviously, as we prepare this and do our yearly updates, there is a methodology that we use. This is not necessarily everything that we do, but the demographers I have that do a lot of this work for me and for us, along with myself, have 40-year-plus histories in living in this county. So, in that, there is a lot of local knowledge that goes with our projections. But obviously, we look at live birth data. That helps us correlate, as it states here, from kindergarten to first grade enrollments to that area. Obviously, individual enrollment patterns, feeder pattern, independent zones. We use census tract data, and you'll see in some of the slides that we are referring to census tract data. It's good to have that as a secondary source, because in what we also try to do, and I brought it with me just to share, and this is only six months, but this is six months' worth of information that we receive from county government. They're very good to us. They provide us with every building permit. We study that. This is only six months. I didn't choose to bring both notebooks. We have a great relationship, and they show us every building permit that is approved, so we know that, so we can tell you every single one of those. We use census tract data to support that, but our best knowledge is local knowledge, so we use existing home resales, building permits in all of Cobb County to make sure that we are consistent with what we're trying to do. And this slide is one that you've seen before, back in 2014-15 when we started this. You'll see that we've just added to it each year. You'll see right here, maybe not. You'll see, my little pointer didn't work. You'll see that our first projection on our first year, that we projected 9,200 live births for the school year 2019-20. And as that data came available to us, it was actually 9,222, so we missed it by 22 students. So, we were very proud of that. This also shares with you the importance that we do this yearly, because as proud as we were of our first year, look what happens the second year. And as, can't believe I did that. Sorry. I thought I actually turned that off, so I apologize for that. But then, as you reflect on this and you try to graduate out from six years back to 2019-2020, that was the recessionary year. So, we went through a period of five years from 2009 through 2014 with some recessionary years, so you see some lower numbers there. But as we came out of that, you'll see that our second-year projections, school year 2020-2021, we had projected at 9,250, and the real numbers were 9,658 live births in the year that would lead up to six years later for that school year. So, you can see our numbers are reflecting a need to review this very carefully every year and a potential change. That's very positive, actually, and then the next year, you see the real numbers again, so there's growth to that. And as we go to the next slide, you'll see something that even really reflects this even more, and that is the stability and the consistency of this county, because as you see a fluctuation of live births, then my demographers relate to that, use a formula to determine where those students actually are six years later. You will see in the darker of the two bars, the consistency of live births going into the first grade. That is not the normal for counties. You'll usually see that number go down. We have a real stability opportunity here for our families, that they are staying focused, and I think a whole lot of that has to do with the presentation that was before me, that they realize the quality of the schools here and the quality of education is allowing them to stay here. So, this slide represents stability. It represents consistency. It is just one indicator, but it goes with several others that I'm fixing to show, and I think it's just a really good indicator for Cobb County schools. The next three slides are simple ones, and these, and this is the ones that I was, these are the ones that I was referring to a second ago. This is census data, and this is single-family building permits. I don't know that our county will ever get back to the 70s, 80s, and 90s of the growth that we experienced during that time, but you can see we had some recessionary years, and then you can see there is some now growth. And the next slide shows the same thing, except these are multi-family building permits, apartments, et cetera, and you'll see the high number there. And the reference to that is that most of this is around college campuses, Kennesaw State University, around the Smyrna-Cumberland area, so you'll see some of that in particular areas. But overall, as you see the next slide, it shows that it's an upward trend, probably not back to the way it was in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, but a very positive trend for this school district. We have growth, and that's the reason for the very first slide showing the blue. The growth is really throughout our county. This is a very important slide, too, and this shows the stability, and this is very rare to see. I could bring up very easily many districts, some very close to us, that would reflect very differently than this one. It is not common for school districts to have the same type of numbers that are in K, that are in 12. So, you'll see that in kindergarten, you have 8,104 students, and you'll see in the 12th grade, soon to graduate, a number very similar to that. That is not consistent in demographer work, that school districts are able to maintain its student population the way that you're able to here. Obviously, the 9th grade is something that we're all familiar with, whereas 8th graders move into 9th grade, they start being graded a little more critically, and you have a few students that have to take a little more time to get to the 10th grade than others, but the consistency here, as you'll see, kindergarten through 12, we're maintaining a student population. I truly believe that is because of the quality of education that is being provided here, and what's even probably more important than that is that you're getting them the education that they need so they can graduate, because a lot of what you see in other districts is a decline come 11th and 12th grade, as you have dropouts and a reduction of students staying in school. So, I see this as one of the most important slides in this presentation, because I see it as very positive for our school district. Okay, now, I really need you to help me with this, because this is a difficult slide to share, because it has a lot of information. So, let me go through it a little bit, and please try to hang in there with me as I try to articulate this to an appropriate level. Obviously, the left-hand column is, are the high schools. The instructional units as defined, it's the second column, the student capacity is defined. The student capacity is determined two ways in this school district. There is a state formula where you can refer to, to do the student capacity based on instructional units, and then you, as a school district, choose to modify that to better indicate what the real population and classrooms are at a particular school. In other words, if you are providing a particular incentive program or a different type of program where the number of students might reflect differently than the norm, you would see that, and that's very aggressive for, progressive for your school district to do that, instead of just taking the state numbers. So, you'll see some of that. Obviously, this is the high schools. Your FTE count of this school year is the middle column, where you will see, using as an example, Allatoona High School being the first one. The FTE count for October of this school year was 1,715 students. You can go to the state website, and you can find that exact number as well. The next two columns are projections, original projections from the demographic study of 2014-15. I wanted to share those with you for a couple of reasons. In the high schools, in the middle schools, they're fairly consistent. Now, we're going to adjust them, as we always do each year, but they're still telling the picture, and that's the reason I highlighted a few of the schools. They're still identifying to us that Campbell is in need, Osborne is in need, Pebblebrook is in need, and Wheeler as well, of additional housing. So, we think that our projections and our demographic work is a leading indicator for the upcoming SPOS, that we've identified where the needs are. We're obviously watching North Cobb. We're watching Harrison, which is beginning to see some growth that we didn't originally anticipate, and we're watching all of the schools, just to make sure that we're consistent with that. If you go to the next slide for the middle schools, you'll see somewhat the same thing. You'll see that the enrollment, the middle column, is the FTE from October of this school year. Those are exact numbers, as you reported them to the state, and those are from the state website, so those are as accurate as this school system has today as far as FTE accounting. But the last two columns go back to the original 2014-2015 projections, and you'll see that again, we feel like we're fairly consistent with that, so we've highlighted that. Again, Campbell Middle School, Dickerson, Dodgen, Griffin, Lovinggood are all forecasted in the next SPOS to have improvements in housing because of the identified need through this classroom utilization study that we've been working on. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that it didn't highlight this, and there's a reason for that, because as you recall, we originally showed growth. There was a bubble that was coming through in the 8th or 9th grade, so you were going to see growth in the high schools, you were going to see growth in the middle schools, and what we believed to be behind that was a possible reduction in some school populations in the elementary level. That was the original projection. So, as we flip one more slide, I want you to remember a number for me, and if you look down at the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that the elementary total that we projected for 2024-25 was 45,703 students, and that was a reduction from the original years that we did this. So, we believed at that time, three years ago, that as the 10 years went by, that we would start seeing a potential reduction in students on the elementary level. Now, remember, when we started this was also as we were just coming out of that recession. Okay, so remember that slide. Now, let's go to the next slide, and you'll see that what we're doing here is making our yearly adjustments. So, as we look at the live birth data that showed us that there was a tremendous growth there and that the consistency was there with those families staying in Cobb, we looked at the census data, we looked at the building permits, and all of that indicated to us that we needed to adjust, especially on the elementary level, populations. So, you'll see, and we always try to stay, say, stay, excuse me, 10 years out, but so if you go back and two columns over from the right to the left, looking for school year 24-25, you'll see a number there that is greatly increased from the previous slide of 45,000. So, you'll see now that we're projecting over the next eight years, 50,860 students in the elementary level. We are showing a very strong need for undesignated classrooms, having the ability to house students, and we project this, and Superintendent has oftentimes shared with you and me how important it is that we do this yearly, and here's the example. Here's the perfect example. We were very confident three years ago, coming out of recession, showing the bubble, showing the fact behind the bubble was going to be some reductions in student populations at the elementary level. So, what we're in the process of doing, and we've done this for you for today, we've shown you what we believe for elementary, middle, and high, and those are the next two slides, that we're showing you what we believe those numbers to be, and my demographers now are working on the individual schools, so we'll have that listed per school. But right now, for today's purposes, we want to share with you that we felt pretty good, we feel pretty good about the high school numbers. We're going to adjust those a little bit. We feel pretty good about the middle school numbers, and we're going to adjust those a little bit, and our elementary numbers, as good as we felt at the time, what everything is showing to us is a significant increase, and we think that's a good thing. We think that simply because of the strength of what you heard earlier this morning, the strength of your school district, and we just feel very good about that, and the opportunity to, one, say, we did pretty good on high school and middle school, and maybe we needed to do a little better on elementary, so we have a year to come back and try to improve that. So, we're excited to do that. Okay, here's where I need your help, because we're going to multitask here on these last two slides. So, if you'll go to the last two pages of the handout that I've given you, and the reason I need you to do that is because as you look at the executive summary that I've provided, it's going to refer to certain slides, and Denise over here is going to do some multitasking, and she's going to put the slide up that we're talking about, but you're getting to see on your handout the actual executive summary. So, the first thing on the executive summary says, live births, and we're going to go on to slide four to kind of compensate for that. So, live birth enrollment projections of 2015-16 were as expected. Dr. Salmon was very pleased with his numbers. He only missed it by 22, and he was actually a little upset that he missed it that much. Now, when I sat down with him the next year, and I said, okay, you're only one year out and you're 500 off, he didn't have a lot to say, but what he was really saying was that this is showing that you're coming out of the recession, that it's got a positive impact on Cobb schools, and it's got a positive impact on Cobb communities, and we work very closely with Cobb government, and they're very good to us, providing us with all the handouts that we need to be able to project accurately. So, you'll see here that this is very strong. Going down a little bit on the summary, down to the next to the last statement, the new data shows a live births that have increased, and that is because of the economic activity. Slide five shows you, and that's the second bullet, I skipped around Denise, I'm sorry. The second bullet, the ratio of students born enrolling six years later is remarkably steady. You just don't typically see that, and you've heard me talk about mobility, moveability, walkability. Those are three factors, because families do move. You're showing some real consistency in this county, and that's a real positive for all of us. The next slide, actually, that we want to look at is the enrollment by grade level, and it again shows stability that's really remarkable. So, that's again a compliment to the Cobb County School District, because I can show you a lot of districts that don't look anything like that. So, that's important to note. So, the original projections show a decline in live births. The bubble has moved through the later grades, so we've had to make these adjustments, and we just simply think that the last bullet on that page, the enrollment projections are being adjusted to reflect all of this new data that we have. As Deputy Superintendent Adams indicates always about data is important, well, data's important to us here, and it's good that we can make these adjustments as we need to. The last page of the executive summary simply tells you that edSPOS is needed. EdSPOS V helps us to address these growing needs and enrollment needs, especially at the high school level. The decision to put undesignated classrooms into edSPOS V has provided us the flexibility to account for these economic shifts. If we had not put undesignated classrooms in at the time that we chose to do that, and then this report coming in later would have caused us great concern. So, we have the opportunity to adjust and fix this as we yearly forecast to make sure that we're putting classrooms in the right places for students. It's important to always update this, and we thank you for allowing us to do that. I want to end by quoting Janie Maddox, who is a longtime resident of Cobb County and has supported this school system for many, many years, but a few years ago, she made a statement that still holds very true today, and she said, "Good schools attract new business and families. Poor schools drive business and residences away," and this is a great reflection on that fact that she's telling the truth. Good schools have kept this county very stable and continuing to grow, and the outlook is very strong, and thank goodness, we have an edSPOS coming up in just a couple of weeks.
Let me bring attention to one thing. So, thanks to you, James, for bringing this update, but as we talk about the, you know, we've gotten some, a little bit of complaint or negative comments about how the SPOS notebook came about, which ultimately says how we come up with the SPOS projects. A lot of times, it's mentioned- A lot of times, it's mentioned that, well, we try to figure out how much a SPOLOST would bring in monetarily, and then we try to, you know, figure out what projects we can create to fit into that amount of money. And so what I want to do right now is just take this opportunity to reinforce, again, one of our three priorities of using data to make decisions. As you remember back from the slides, when you had the high schools and the middle schools highlighted, that's what drove, that data is what drove the projects to be in the SPOLOst V notebook. So we do use data to make decisions. We don't take a dart and throw it at the wall and figure out, okay, where do we want to build a new school, or who's going to get a new addition? We do that based on data. So, and I appreciate the relationship we have with Mr. Wilson to be able to provide that data. To a level, as you saw on the first number, to only miss the projection by 22 students out of 113,000 is pretty extraordinary. So we have a lot of confidence in that data, but also recognize, and I want to reemphasize to the board, the necessity of having an annual update of that demographic data, because, again, in the past, the district has made decisions on a demographic study that was sometimes three to five years old, and that's just not a great decision-making position to be in, because potentially, you're making decisions based on incorrect data. So, again, just to reemphasize, the need to do that annual update is very significant for us.
Surprisingly, we have some questions. Mr. Wheeler, how about you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm chomping at the bit. Mr. Wilson, excellent job again. Hit these numbers is amazing, over and over and over. It's very important to have, I know, because back in the day, some of these schools overflowed before they got relief, and hopefully, we don't get that situation again. Question or concern that I have, I'm the West Cobb guy, I think you know that, and the projections for that area, where do we take into account when the commissioners or planning people or whoever, or do we take into account rezonings? You get potential that, you know, we, I don't know, we just don't know what's going to happen in the future, other than these building permits. Do you have any insight on how to look at that possibility? Because you see it all over in West Cobb, boom, signs here, signs there, these schools, some of them are approaching or at capacity, and if you put in a massive development, it's going to pop the numbers.
I know there was an intellectual discussion as to whether or not we should have included undesignated classrooms in the SPOLOst. The best attempt for a school district to be able to deal with what you just stated, which is very true, is to be able to have undesignated classrooms, so as they bring on developments, as they should, we're able to compensate for that. It is very hard to know the next developer that's going to come along in six months and say, "I just bought this property over there next door to you and I, and we're going to put 20 homes on there." It's very hard to know that. We obviously know where the available land is, so we can forecast just simply due to that. The areas around Walton, Mr. Sweeney, he knows that it's pretty well-built out, but he also knows that they're coming in and tearing down and rebuilding. So we know that, and we kind of comprehend where we need to go, but the undesignated classroom ability allows us to, down the road, as something like you just suggested happens, and it will, to be able to deal with that.
And I've got another question. I guess this one's from Mr. Ragsdale, going to catch you kind of going from the far right to the far left. I look at these numbers in the elementary classes, and you've got, we've got a couple of schools that are under 400 or less projected, Milford being one of them, that's one of my schools, and Belmont Hills is another. At what point would the district, I mean, I'm not trying to scare anybody, but at what time, at what point does a school become too small to maintain and maybe we need to consolidate? I mean, it's not there yet, and we don't, I know it's not going to happen tomorrow or next week or in the next year or two, but these are 10, 20-year, we're talking 2025, it's kind of out in the future, but I'm just curious, what number do you look at to, you know, say something does happen and goes the other way?
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, we discussed that exact scenario for SPOLOst V, and we've already said, and matter of fact, we've got the architect appointed, assuming SPOLOst V passes, for Harmony Leland, to have the new school there built that will take into account the combination of clay. So that being said, that's some of the things that we do look at, is the size of the school and proximity of attendance zones, because we've also committed, you know, that the attendance zone will not be modified. But, and like we said, because of that situation with Harmony Leland, we've committed that that's going to be, should SPOLOst V pass, the first project coming out of the gate will be the construction of that school. So, that being said, we do take that in consideration, but it is not the primary decision-making data that drives, oh, we need to close this school and build a new one. When we take that into consideration, and we still have, as we discussed in the previous conversation, we have Riverside Primary and Riverside Intermediate. So there's some of those conversations that need to take place as far as, you know, dividing up an elementary range. So to answer your question, quite honestly, there's not a magic number. It's not that when a school drops to X number, we say, "Okay, we've got to combine it with another school." And certainly, that would not be the decision-making point in utilizing, again, should SPOLOst V pass, undesignated classrooms. We wouldn't be saying, "Okay, we've got undesignated classrooms, and this school has dropped to X number, we need to merge it with another school and build another one." That's not what that's for. That's to accommodate unexpected growth. The perfect example that I can use currently is King Springs. You know, thankfully, we had Brown again, and we've used that twice, right? We used it for Teasley, to have a safe construction environment while Teasley addition was being constructed, or that we split them between the two campuses. But then, just miraculously, they were able to move into Teasley, into the new addition, and then all of a sudden, King Springs had unanticipated growth, and so we've had to split them, because the campus at King Springs would not accommodate the number of portable units necessary to remedy the growth. So thankfully, again, miraculously, we had timing work out perfectly to where we had Brown campus to utilize. So had we had undesignated classrooms in SPOLOst V, then we certainly could have entertained at least, you know, either doing an addition modification or what have you. Obviously, in SPOLOst V, King Springs is slated to have a rebuild on its current property to accommodate that growth, and by no means are we going to close Brown, because good gracious, that's twice we've had to use it. So fortunately, we're in that situation where we do have that. But to answer your question, there's not a magic number that flips a switch that says we've got to close the school and merge it with another one because it's too small.
Yeah, usually, like I say, we always talk about growth, 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 it's stuff on the other end, and I know that I was watching television the other night, and Atlanta City's closing several of their elementary schools for various reasons, but just a concern, because, you know, you want to spend a lot of resources and funding if we know we're going to close this building in a year or two, or, I mean, that's, I know we're 10, 20 years out, but I was just concerned, questioned if there was a magic number, if a school became not viable economically to keep open, we have one right down the road here, and you could shift them over there.
Right. Let me shift to the flip side of that, though, too, just to cover. While there's not a magic number that says, "Okay, we're going to close this one and merge it with another one," we will not be building new elementary schools below 1,000 students, because we just can't afford to build small elementary schools. So when we do construct a new elementary school, it will be in that 1,000 to 1,100 range, such that, and then that does, as in Harmony Leland's case, that presents that opportunity to have the combination of a clay in Harmony Leland, so that those students, so that we can get the, you know, efficiencies of scale to speak. But certainly, you know, we will be keeping the facility of clay and Harmony Leland for potential future use, because we have seen that that creates an environment in which we can take advantage of, in case we have unanticipated growth, or in case we need to utilize the facility for something else in the district for K-12 purposes.
All right. Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Wilson, for the update and a good report. Got a couple of questions for you, though. Have you read this morning's paper, by any chance, on the front page? To be honest, I have not. I saw the headlines, and I was, had a phone call where it was described to me what went on. It was about building permits and zoning and rezoning.
I have read that.
And here in the last few weeks, I've been giving myself a crash course on RSL, RA5, R40s, OSC, RSL, variances, open spaces, you know, and they are, the developers are becoming quite creative, and now they're even including creeks, you know, and land areas that are not usable as open spaces, you know, and open spaces, I thought, was to have a better quality of life so people can get out. Now, this, to bring it together, where in your reports, is that we weren't anticipating this, you know, and the number of permits that are increasing in West Cobb, which, Board, my fellow colleague, Mr. Wheeler and I have been saying all along, is not decreasing. They are moving up, they are moving in. And one way, and I'm not sure I have an answer yet, because this month, I just started attending all the zoning meetings, so I could, I'm learning, I'm like drinking from a fire hose right now, but I'm learning pretty quickly, that somehow, we need to designate how people are moving, where they're moving in, and where, and I'm not sure, I don't have an answer yet for that. In other words, we're getting an influx of people moving into the western part, and when I say western, I, just a line all the way down, whether it's southwestern or northwestern or whatever. So do you, my first question is, do you have any concerns with that, or do you have any thoughts along that line?
I don't have any concerns on it, and I'll tell you why. The analogy that you used at the beginning of your question was about the creeks and whatnot, and that's been going on for years. Developers know that they can sell homes in Cobb County, and that's what we've been talking about. Schools are good. I mean, I know we're bragging on ourselves, but it's true. So they look for land in East Cobb, West Cobb, wherever it can be, and so what we would have built on 20 years ago, or not built on 20 years ago, the developers are coming in and saying, "This is prime property." And that's been very consistent, and there's reasons for that, because as we get closer and closer as a county to being so-called built out, they're looking for whatever land they can, and it's part of the difficulty that you have as a school district in finding available land for new schools, for the same reasons. So, yes, I don't know that I have a concern about it, because I'm very much for families, good families being able to move into our communities, and especially West Cobb, since you and I both live there. So I'm pretty familiar with that area, and yes, and that's the importance of doing this yearly update, because when we started this, coming out of that recession, that was not the story. Those schools, for the most part, were either stable or in decline, but we knew that that's still good area for families and homes to be built and to be moved into, and that's happening. And so that's why the undesignated classrooms become important, and that's why, as the Superintendent directs me, is to provide this to you yearly, and we have a good relationship with county government. They give me every building permit. I get them every month. I've got every one of them. Now, that only tells me so much, but it does help me, along with all the other methodologies that we use, to provide you accurate data on forecasting for where schools need to be and classrooms need to be. And so let me, I'm going to, you may have another question for me, but I wanted to add something to what Mr. Wheeler was saying. As you look at other school districts, as you mentioned one, sometimes, school districts like the one you mentioned are at about 50% of capacity. In other words, what available classrooms they have and what students they have is significantly different. So that's why sometimes other school districts have to look at closing of schools and things such as that. You're at 100% capacity, and as our projections send out for at least eight to 10 more years, that's not going to change. So it's very difficult, but it's a great question and a great point that Mr. Wheeler made, but there are differences in Cobb County than other metro districts and districts across the state.
Let me also jump in to reference your point about the article. So let me first start out by saying that I've had numerous conversations with the new Chairman Boyce, and I can't say enough about his willingness to work with the school district as a partner. So to echo the point about we have a great relationship with county government, I will start with Chairman Boyce. So he has definitely committed to working with the district and the district working with the commissioners, so I want to, you know, to applaud him for that, and, but most importantly, say to him, "Thanks," and how much we appreciate it, because I'll take us back to a few board meetings ago, when Mr. Wheeler had a board business item where we wanted to modify the communication and the input that we were providing to the county for different zonings, specifically when a development was going to significantly impact a school, regardless of whether it was just FTE, or whether it was traffic or congestion or what have you, in a safety and security type of environment. So we have definitely done that, and know Mr. Adams has communicated to the board about that communication, so that has started. We took that direction from the board, and again, I just want to say that I applaud and thank Chairman Boyce and all of the commissioners for having that agreement and working relationship with the school district that, you know, sometimes has not necessarily been as strong and upfront and transparent as they are attempting to make it at this point in time. So I have a lot of confidence in our relationship with the county government, specifically, you know, Chairman Boyce. He has a very large voice right now, because he's newly elected, and he's able to get some things done and changed and moving in the right direction. So I definitely am thankful to have that working relationship that we do. So, and I know where you were going, you know, with asking about the article, but that's, I feel very encouraged with the conversations that I've had with Chairman Boyce.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and I don't disagree. In fact, in the month and a half that I've been thoroughly immersed in learning that area, and there's a lot to go by, you know, there's a comprehensive land plan called 2030. They're working on a comprehensive land plan now called 2040 for the next 10 years after the 2030 plan. There's also Chapter 134 of the Cobb County Code that is about, not exaggerating, is a good two inches thick, that comes out with every, with the changes. So I'm hopeful that we can continue, and I'm going to be an integral part of that, of improving and getting better data and working with the county. So, but one of the things that I wanted to bring up, too, although, and again, I agree with you, that the data is very important, and decisions should be based on data, but data does not insert the human factor and intuition, and that's been proven over the last four, five years, several times, and I hope this board would come and make sure that we include the human factor. board would would come and make sure that we include the human factor in when we're looking at the data and things that might not be projected by just looking at numbers. So excellent, Mr. Wilson, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for your support and your comments, too. I yield back. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to reiterate that. Mr. Ragstale, thank you for keeping this Mr. Wilson yearly updates. This is becoming very important and always has been, but now that we've got this information, it's much more helpful in keeping what's going on with the schools and things. And thank you for bringing this the last few years.
Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great report. And Mr. Wilson, just have a couple of questions and a few comments, too. Last week, I was at Mount Bethel Elementary School, and there's a new subdivision that opened up not far from there, adjacent to a neighborhood that I live in, and it's about 120 housing units. And in talking to the principal, the just that development alone, it resulted in one full school bus. So I think they're getting in the neighborhood of 50 to 60 students out of that 120-unit subdivision. Now, that's only impacting, obviously, the elementary school. Now, you've they'll roll up through the middle and high school ranks. Do we have in honestly, I kind of did my own assessment early on. I kind of suspected that it's about three and a half people per household and that, you know, if presuming two-parent household, that you've got one and a half children per home and just kind of extrapolating and go about 40% of them are going to be elementary, maybe a little bit more, and those numbers actually worked out pretty closely. And the reason I'm bringing that, you know, example up is that we're seeing a tremendous amount of multifamily development. And I have no idea, knowing what those ratios might be for multifamily development. And do you I mean, is it do you have any indicators as to what that might be? Because I know a lot of millennials, you know, childless homes and that kind of stuff, you know, will be part of the multifamily development, but there's still got to be some component that says there will be children habitating those homes.
Depending on the development itself, the demographers use a .7 to a 1.5 ratio depending on the category of home and the housing. So they try to they try to estimate based on the size of the home, the type of development, the location, as well as multifamily type things. So it usually starts at .7, and you're absolutely correct, in the Mount Bethel area, that would be 1.5 or thereabouts.
Okay. And the the other reason I'm bringing this up, and I've mentioned this before, and I think it points to the board's wisdom as to the usage of undesignated classroom categories, is it does not take long to build a large multifamily development. And where most of that is going to take place, it's going to be in the South Cobb area, simply because of the cost of land and today, less density. But if you take a look around and you go up and down Roswell Road, if you go up and down Piedmont, or if you go up and down Peachtree, you're seeing, you know, multi-story, multifamily unit developments being built. And the same thing will happen here within Cobb County. Eventually, the land value and the returns that investors will get off of investments along Cobb Parkway, for example, you're going to see car dealerships replaced with multifamily development. You'll see old retail units replaced with multifamily development. And it has clearly been identified as a transportation corridor. So you can see, like, the vision and where this is going, and not the least of which is the job center creation that you're going to have in there and around the Cumberland area. It already is a large job center creation area, but you're going to see more office building development and so forth occur. So the flexibility of the undesignated classroom is anything but a slush fund. Okay, I mean, many people have mischaracterized that. I mean, the thing is, is that today, I mean, in 2017, by the end, and again, if SLOSH five passes, that's six years out, 2023, and it's really, really difficult for this board just to say, okay, we know exactly where the growth is going to occur. We know exactly what level, and on a micro level, we know exactly the attendant zone within which that growth is going to occur. And that's why it's important to have that kind of flexibility. The other thing I want to bring up has to do with, we'll call the flexibility in vouchers, school choice, and charter schools. We know that the current administration, Department of Education, is really eager to kind of push those initiatives. The thing is, is that, and to Mr. Wheeler's point relative to small schools, you know, if there's ever any indication that we're going to wind down a school or something, the thing is that, you know, the Georgia Legislature is actually entertaining certain particular items. And fortunately, this bill did not make it out of committee, but there was a committee bill, it was House Bill 423 relating to state charters gaining the use of local unused facility that local charters aren't using either. The local board would be unable to charge a rental or leasing fee, and if they decided to sell the facility of the state charter, they could only charge $1. Okay, so the thing is, is that we have growth and we have we have students that we have to place in certain places, and like, Superintendent brought this up, the use, for example, of a facility to basically temporarily serve students during a time where we're constructing other schools becomes very, very important.
Could I make a response comment to Mr. Sweeney? His earlier comments about land corridors and different types of housing is very, very real. And Mr. Wheeler, when you were making comments that were very positive, too, some years ago, this district grew 3,000-plus students every year. There was plenty of land available. You could predict where it was going to go because you knew where the large tracts of land were. So it was very easy to project. You couldn't keep up with it, and that's what SLOSH started doing, is trying to reduce the dependency on portable classrooms, was the phrase that was used so oftentimes in SLOSH 1 and SLOSH 2. But you have a different type of development now. And honestly, and I guess I'm just a broken record here, but the school system is so strong in providing for families and children, people are going to find a way to come here, whether that's finding the $500,000 home that they may not be able to afford, or the multifamily home that allows them to go to these schools. So you're right, developers are going to find tracts of land where they can build, regardless of whether they have to go up or out or behind or whatever they have to do. It's a positive for everyone. So we're trying to make sure that we're prepared. And your second comment, look, Cobb is just different. You're at capacity. You're going to stay at capacity. There are districts all around you that have plenty of seats or schools that could be converted to someone else. You just don't have that. So and you're not and our projections show that you're not going to have that. People are going to find a way to come to our county because in public education K-12 that we are so proud of, you have to look as a family where you want to go to educate your children. So that's what really this is all about. The undesignated classrooms, whether we backed into it or came to it frontways or however we did it, is going to serve this county very well over the next six years.
Scott.
Hey, just a quick follow-up comment, and I agree with everything that you just said. And I've witnessed this in other communities. In San Jose, California, the populations of schools eventually started to decline a little bit. And that's a, you know, at the time, the population there was not far from Cobb County. I mean, the city population was about three-quarters of a million people. They began to shutter some schools, and they began to turn those schools over to other uses, and in some instances, sold the schools. In some instances, entered into long-term leases in those things. And in other instances, they were destroyed and basically residential housing or retail components were built up. Then the multifamily development came in. And then they really ran into a serious capacity issue because they no longer had the available land, nor did they have the schools or the resources to house those students. We're a ways off from that, but, you know, the thing is, is we got to be really, really careful about the considerations of closing schools down the road.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, Mr. Scamahorn, next, and then Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of points to hit on. One is just as on the multi-level, our family buildings, there's a medium to large site planned off of Bells Ferry and not too far north, I believe. I've looked at so many already that not too far north from 41, Bells Ferry. And most of those multifamily units are going to be one and two-bedroom. They're expecting most of them to go to the, excuse me, millennials or KSU students. And I think only about 8% of those units are going to be three-bedroom, which, you know, now you cram a lot of people into one bedroom, but I'd rather not be there. But so there are there is some planning in all fairness with that. Since on the undesignated classrooms, it's, and I don't want to relitigate what we've already been through, but since it was brought up, it's not the designation of undesignated classrooms that could be an issue. It's the size of the amount of money that's just arbitrarily put in there. And that is why we're tasked, I believe, to be specific in our projects to the best of our ability. So just to be fair and hopefully kind, not to relitigate that, it's not the designation, it's the size of the designation that's come into question, and I yield back. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Scamahorn. All right, Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To go back to our growth of our population a little bit, since I live in the East Cobb area, I see a lot of changes taking place. I see a lot of old homes were built in the 70s, 60s and 70s on an acre lot are now being demolished. And rather than one house being there, there's going to be two houses there because the developers, rather than paying $300,000 for an acre, they pay $250,000 so that they get the property cheaper than they could buy raw land in a lot of cases. And that's happening a lot in East Cobb area, particularly on the Sewell Mill, Roswell Road area. And I think you'll see a lot of flipping of houses down in the Lower Roswell area, Sodaya Park and East Valley area. I think as the SunTrust Park develops even more, you'll see more housing being torn down and rebuilt and at a higher prices. But they're going to bring children with them also. I know, like, in my area, there was a 40-acre, approximately 40-acre tract that has just been sold about a half a mile from me. I project that there'll probably be 80 to 100 homes on that site. Also, we have a large tract on Roswell Road, the Tripp property, which is 52 acres. Sometime some sometime in the future, which is probably not going to be too long, somebody's going to buy that property and develop it, unless they make a park out of it. And evidently, that's not going to come to fruition, even though some people have tried. But but there's still a lot of land, and I noticed in my area, there's what you would say, four or five acres. They're developing it. They're putting houses, I know, like, on Johnson Ferry near Mausian Church, there's a they're going to be nine houses. They've already graded off, so there's going to be nine houses down what at one time, nobody wanted that property. But now there's going to be nine houses in there in the future. So East Cobb is changing a lot, very expensive homes being built, but there is a lot of rebuilding going on, particularly like in the Indian Hills area. As Mr. Sweeney said, they're tearing down these, what used to be $400,000, $500,000 houses, putting million-dollar houses. But but I don't think they're putting two of them on an acre, but they're building some big houses. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more thing. I want to thank the superintendent for having the wisdom of having the demographic study done every year at Mr. Adams and Mr. Wilson.
I want to thank the superintendent for hiring me, too.
Mr. Sweeney.
Thanks. I just want to make this real quick. And Mr. Wilson, thank you very much. You know, based on those ratios, like .7 to 1.5, and just to give you an example, and I've just run these numbers, I my understanding is, is just in the Cumberland area alone, we're looking at approximately 6,000 housing units. Is that right, in that neighborhood? So based on that, that would relate to an increase in FTE across the district of 4,200 students at the .7 ratio and 9,000 students at the 1.5 ratio. So somewhere in between that number. I think it's going to be closer to the .7, but anyway, so and that just in the overall impact, just in that area alone, on that would be a 3.75% increase in the FTE district-wide. I mean, just just for the Cumberland area alone, and there's growth happening elsewhere in the county. At the higher end, I mean, and again, that would 9,000 students, that's 8% growth in the total FTE. I mean, I mean, that's substantial, and it's concentrated. That's the more important thing. It's very, very concentrated. And I know that we're looking, obviously, with SLOSH 5 at a new middle school. We are already overcapacity at Teasley with a 20-classroom addition. We're overcapacity at the new Smyrna School. We're overcapacity at Argyle's, pretty close, but it is landlocked. But all of the schools really within that area that impact the attendance zones at the middle, elementary, and the high school level, at near or overcapacity and a very concentrated enrollment growth. So those are the types of things that we're going to have to contend with going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Ms. Thayer.
I just wanted to reassure our people in small schools that we love you. I wish all of our elementary schools could be small. I would hate to close any of them, and we will not close them unless we have to because they are wonderful little environments, and we wish that we could all keep you. So we don't have any plans anytime in the future, right, guys, to close any small schools? So just wanted to make that word of assurance. Thank you.
Mr. Scamahorn, I'm going to let you have the last word.
Okay, just one word. I wanted to acknowledge what Mr. Sweeney said as far as being landlocked, but that's going to be true, and that's really why the discussion's ongoing, is we may have to look at some of our landlocked schools and jump on an opportunity to get property that comes available next to one. And that's where I want to commend the superintendent to think strategically. So if Argyle is a prime area that needs to be maintained and looked at, a piece of property like we did at East Valley, you know, we gathered that piece of property, and I think we did at one other school, too. So I'm sure the superintendent's on board with that. And then finally, I would like to urge the board to think as a county, as in the past we could, think more maybe for each of our posts, but and it's not to say we shouldn't look after our posts, but because things are becoming more critical and harder to obtain, that we start thinking more of what's needed for the county. It's only a request. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Whoops. Did you have one more? Okay. I want to say thank you for all your hard work. I want to say thank you for all your hard work. This is one of the most important things that we're doing now, because it's not about growth, it's about change. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, the next item on superintendent's report is to recognize that School Board Appreciation Week is March the 13th through the 17th. You will find at your place a certificate of appreciation, which I am sure you will frame and display prominently in your house and/or office. And if you need more copies, I'm sure we can accommodate that as well. In all seriousness, though, you know, it takes a lot of commitment to be a board member, and I speak for everybody in the district and say that we do appreciate that commitment that you make and that sacrifice, because it does take a lot of time away from your families and potentially your jobs, and we definitely appreciate that. And I appreciate it because just as we had quite a lengthy presentation on our literacy proof of concept, again, you guys being part of the team, our relationship with superintendent and board is ultimately the catalyst for what allows us as a district to do those kind of projects, to bring about those kind of results, and that's why we're here. So, and it's not always been that way in the past. So I greatly appreciate the relationship that we have. And again, I know I speak for everybody in the district to express sincere appreciation for the job that you do for the district. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And...
We don't have your land, right? Just personnel and legal.
All right, personnel and legal.
Mr. Chair, make a recommendation that we adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters.
Thank you. Do you have a second? All right, Mr. Banks, second. So we are going to go into executive session and have...
A vote.
Oh, we got to vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, got that. So now, when do you think we ought to plan on being back here?
12:30.
All right, 12:00. Thank you.
Now, can you hear me? All right. We just reconvened from executive session, had a unanimous vote. All right. Ms. Secretary, did you get the motion in the second? All right. Thank you. My apologies. Okay. Now, what's the next thing we need to do? Do we need to vote on executive session, or do we want to... All right. All right. With no objection now, we're back, and we want to go to board agenda items. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir. Members of the board. Agenda item number one is the monthly recurring item for recommendation for authorization of school properties disposal per District Administrative Rule DO-R. And the board received that list of items electronically. Be happy to answer any questions.
Consent. All right.
All right. Agenda item number two, and let me just go through and see, I believe, all of the rest of the remaining agenda items Mr. Adams will bring to Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Agenda item number two, recommendation for authorization to purchase seven school buses from Yancey Bluebird. This is piggybacking off the Georgia statewide contract for school buses that was competently bid by the Department of Administrative Services. We're going to utilize that contract if you approve it to purchase seven 72-passenger school buses, the big ones, in an effort to even further improve safety and efficiency. We're recommending that you accept the recommendation to purchase these seven off the statewide contract through Yancey Bluebird at an estimated cost of $540,513.75, as you see listed there. This will initially come from the general fund account code you see listed there, but we will be reimbursed by the Georgia State bond funds targeted for this purpose. So ultimately, there should not be any net cost to the district once those transactions go through. And authorizing us to purchase the buses now will allow us to even further increase our economic efficiencies, reliability, and safety of transportation. You'll be interested to know that these seven buses will replace buses that are model year 1999. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are full-size buses?
Yes, sir.
No special need buses?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
But we can do this on consent, can't we?
All right. We'll put this on the consent agenda. Next.
Next agenda item, recommendation for approval of an amendment to a current lease agreement with Comcast Cable at Still Elementary School. The very short version is, we have currently at Still a communications hut, shed, shack, small outbuilding, serving Comcast. They are currently paying $9,000 a year for that, and we have negotiated additional future revenue to the district, two five-year periods, one initial five-year with an option to renew for another five-year, and that current $9,000 a year revenue will go to the figure you see there, just over $45,000 a year annually, and then should it be renewed for the second five-year period to just over the $50,000 a year figure. So obviously, no cost to the district, increased revenue from Comcast, so we're recommending you approve the amendment to the current lease with Comcast Communications at Still Elementary School. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Consent agenda? Consent? All right.
Next item, number four, recommendation for approval of an easement with Georgia Power at the site of the Brumby Elementary and East Cobb Middle School replacements. Georgia Power is requesting an easement there along Terrill Mill Road. You see the area indicated on the map at the site of those two replacement schools. They are wanting to relocate four power poles that are currently in the right-of-way. There's new construction there that would require us to move the poles back to create a turn lane into the school. So we're basically moving four poles back a little bit, and they need the easement, Georgia Power does, to allow them to do that at no cost to the district. Power pole relocation. Available for any questions.
Mr. Sweeney?
Is that a... That's going to be a permanent easement, too, for that purpose? Want to be...
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation line along Terrill Mill. Is that right?
Yes. You should have a map, and you see the blue area indicated there.
All right. Now, going to the school, are we going underground?
Power poles up until our property, and you may recall, it was either the last board meeting or the one prior, we brought you another one.
It was a water...
That was for underground lines to the actual school once it hits our property.
You brought the water, but I don't remember the...
We recently brought you, I believe it was Cobb EMC, if memory serves me.
Okay.
And that was to go underground once it hits our property.
So on the school property, it'll all be underground?
Once, from the power poles underground to the school.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Should be consent. All right. There we go.
Next item, number five, recommendation for approval to award a contract for cooler and freezer replacements at Bernie Davis Garrison Mill and Cahaly Elementary Schools. This is in accordance with SLOSS IV. Those four schools are scheduled to receive cooler and/or freezer replacements. You see the four schools listed to receive the cooler and freezer replacements. We received two bids on this project. They were fairly tightly grouped together, about a 15% variance between the two. We're recommending that you allow us to award the contract to Triad Construction Company out of College Park, Georgia, and authorize us to execute that as budgeted in SLOSS IV for the dollar amount you see there, $856,000. That is, of course, the lowest of the two bids, and that will allow us to begin work and get this project completed over the summer.
Okay. This being a SLOSS item, this is a discussion item. Okay. Discussion. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Mr. Adams.
And then item number six, recommendation for approval to award a contract for flooring replacement at Hendrix Elementary School. Once again, in accordance with SLOSS IV, Hendrix is scheduled to receive flooring replacement. You have the attached facility summary. In this case, we received five proposals. In this case, we're recommending that you award it to TOPPS Services out of Carrollton, Georgia, for the amount of $514,000 as budgeted in SLOSS IV, as you see listed there. That's the lowest of the bids. The bids were, the five bids, which is a fairly good number, were grouped even more tightly together. So we're recommending you award that. You may recall Hendrix previously had a different name, Austale Elementary School, but the flooring itself is 15 years old. So if you approve of the award of the contract at this time, we can get this project underway and completed over the summer as well.
Any discussion? All right. So put on the discussion agenda.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm also going to ask Mr. Adams to bring all items requiring action following executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I could have just stayed at the podium. I'm pleased to present you the Human Resources Personnel Report for today, March 8, 2017. The administration recommends the approval of identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the personnel action report as discussed in executive session. We do not have any principal level or higher position recommendations, so this concludes the personnel report.
Does this require a vote?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion that we accept the report?
Mr. Superintendent, I make a recommendation. We accept the superintendent's personnel action report as presented.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney, motion. And we have a second for Mr. Banks. All those, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Got that. And then Mr. Sweeney has a motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And as a separate item, I make a motion to extend the superintendent's contract for one year through March 23, 2020.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have two seconds, Mr. Banks, Mr. Morgan. All right. Any discussion? All right. Okay. Hearing... Oh, Mr. Banks. Okay.
Uh-oh.
When are we going to lunch?
La Peria from Melon.
Okay. Okay. All right. That's been transcribed. All right. So if we're ready for a vote, are those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Any opposed? None. So we got you for another year. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And let's see, what's next? Approval of the agenda. If there's no objection, this agenda is approved. And I see none. Okay. Now, I think it's back to you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. York to come forward and bring the two administrative rule modifications.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, members of the board, we've had two administrative rules submitted to you for a 10-day review, and just here to see if you have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. York, just one question, and this has to do with the catastrophic illness leave bank. If you go to, let's see, line 135, the physician's statement, in this, it references Form in Number One, but then below, then within the document, it actually also references Form Two. Is that correct, or should it both be Form One?
Yes, sir. I'll look at that and make sure we've got the right reference. We did add a new form, Form Two.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that the reference is correct.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. York.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So it's time for board remarks, and we'll start with Ms. Thayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chastain. First of all, thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. You serve our district well, and we look forward to continued success at your direction. So we appreciate that. Thank you. Also want to recognize the state has named top-performing Title I schools, and that's no small feat. So the Cobb County Title I outstanding schools were Acworth Intermediate, Bryant Elementary, East Cobb Middle, Hendrix Elementary, my own Lindley Sixth Grade Academy, and Tapp Middle. So congratulations to all of you. You've done a great job. Also wanted to say that last night I attended the Floyd Middle School Art Exhibition, and if you've never attended that, it is outstanding. The art teacher there, Ms. Lisa Collins, does a marvelous job. She's been there. See people nodding in the office. So Lisa, I hope that you know that even people in our audience here recognize the work that you've done there, but she's been in that community a while. She even recognized two generations from one family that she has taught. But her art is just stellar. So it was a great experience to see that again, see the enthusiasm, and hear the proclamations from her... from her students of the difference that she's made in their lives, too. So it was a real treat. If you get a chance, go down to the Mabel House and look at the work. It'll be up the rest of this week. So thank you to her and her students for a great evening. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to be short. I want to thank Mr. Nick Parker for setting up a tour of the new Mountain View School. It was well-attended. Quite a few staff members came, and F and T committee members came. And also want to say that last night, we had a Cobb DOT open house for changes to Davis Road at Sandy Plains, also some roundabouts that are being proposed on Holly Springs and at Postal Tritt in Hembry. And also, we have at Polosco, we have a roundabout underway right now. So it's supposed to be ready by the middle of July. The Mountain View community really turned out last night. There was people, there were a lot of people there, and a lot of people left, and a lot of people came in. So it was well-attended. So the community, I think, was very interested in what's going on in that area. I also want to say to the schools that I read to, Cat in the Hat, I went to Murdoch, Tritt, and Mountain View. But I read the five different classes. So I learned that don't ask the students to ask questions because they don't, it's nonstop. But they are inquisitive. But it was fun. We enjoyed each other, and I look forward to it again because I put down three schools, and I thought I'd get one school. I got all three of them, so that's fine. But it's a good program. Also, do we have the video? I want to take some thunder out of Mr. Chastain's area. Spraberry Navy Junior ROTC is also, again, number-one ROTC unit in Georgia. So want to say thank you and congratulations to those students and their teachers and the military people that are supervising them and providing the leadership and the character that they will, I think, in later years, I really appreciate. So that was a... We have a great ROTC program in our schools. I wish we had it mandatory like when I went to school, but we don't. But if a student wants to learn character and leadership, that's a good program. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kind of second Mr. Banks with the Cat in the Hat. I'd like to thank Principal Scarborough at Still Elementary and Principal Singletary at Varner for inviting me to read there. It was a pleasure. As you go down the hallways, and you see a lot of good things going on in these schools with the teachers and the kids, it's a real pleasant experience and glad that they had the oppor... Glad I had the opportunity to do that and thank those two ladies for inviting me. Second, I'd like to recognize Mr. Christian Suttle at Hill Grove High School, Ms. Candice Wilks at Lost Mountain Middle School for their subtle talks and coffee talks. I think I may have said this before, but I appreciate their efforts. They do a great job of meeting with the community and answering questions on all sorts of school matters, and it's good to have that kind of communication with your community. And if you're in those, in those schools, I would invite you to attend. I'm sure they're not going to mind me saying that. But it's a good experience. And finally, sending out best wishes for our girls' basketball teams at Harrison High School and McKeecher. They're both playing for the state championship this week. Harrison's at the University of Georgia, and McKeecher's at Georgia Tech. And I've had the opportunity to see both of those teams multiple times, and they are great teams. And Coaches Lenahan and Coach Arthur have done a great job with their staffs. And go get them, guys. I mean, we're backing you, and you've had an outstanding season. We want to bring home the trophies for Cobb County.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, as my colleague Ms. Thayer said, want to congratulate the highest-progress schools. Thank you for sending that information, Alice. I want to highlight, among other schools, Hendrix Elementary, TAP, and Bryant, all of them. I'm fortunate to represent with their continued progress. I want to go back to something earlier and say that I'm still on cloud 99 about the performance of those six schools and what they are showing us is possible. And kudos to those principals, those teachers, and to Superintendent and his staff. Also want to, I read at Compton Elementary, and I want to thank Ms. Liz Murphy for allowing me to read over there. And I think that's pretty much it, Mr. Chair.
Very good. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Want to start off by giving a shout-out to the Metropolitan Marietta Cowanis Club for their recognition of the STAR students. Several board members, including the superintendent, had an opportunity to attend that function. That was February 27, and it was remarkable hearing, you know, the students. But not only the students, one of the really neat things about this event is that the students select the teacher that had the most impact on them. And basically, they get a chance to talk about the impact that students, the teachers have had on those students, and it truly is impactful. And just a great shout-out to them. I want to thank the district administration for the communication on the SPOLOST V program. I've attended numerous presentations, most recently at Argyle, Timber Ridge, and Mount Bethel. And the job that the district is doing about communicating SPOLOST V has been very, very, very good. Mount Bethel, give them a shout-out. I had an opportunity to do two books there, Cat in the Hat and Green Eggs and Ham. And it's just a lot of fun just to participate and see the children's reactions when you're going in there and getting a chance to read to them. At Wheeler High School, Wheeler High School, I want to give a shout-out to a particular student there. And I'm going to also talk about a Kennesaw Mountain High School student as well that had won the Congressional App Challenge, but not once. This is the second time that they have won that. And Representative Barry Loudermilk announced Kennesaw Mountain High School student Ryan Cabeli and Wheeler High School student Arvin Padar as the winners of the 2017 Congressional App Challenge for Georgia's 11th Congressional District. This is the second year the students have won the app challenge. The students, they're 11th graders, created a specifically-designed app called Legacy Park, an app aimed at closing the communications gap between homeowners' associations and the neighborhoods they serve. It allows the HOA to instantly send out notifications and surveys to subsets of the community, allowing residents to stay up-to-date with information that applies directly to them without receiving unnecessary content. And these are just two stellar examples of, you know, the efforts above and beyond, you know, what we expect out of our students. And there are so many different clubs. There are so many different opportunities for students to explore other avenues and their gifts. And just a wonderful shout-out to these two students. This evening, I'll be at Wheeler High School for a presentation and also to talk about current legislative events. That's hosted by the Wheeler PTSA. And then, I also want to shout-out to Walton High School and their PTSA. Annually, the Walton High School PTSA hosts a function, and Principal McNeil hosts a function where they bring in all of the principals for the feeder schools. They host a breakfast, and Irene Barton, who is with the 9th District PTSA and has worked as a legislative chair, gives a great update as to what's occurring at the Georgia Dome. And I've attended this annually for the past six years. It's just a great event. And that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First, let me say, I appreciate the vote of confidence from the board for the contract. But, you know, I'm going to go back to our meeting today. I was just sitting here thinking about that in 22 minutes, we got the business part of the meeting done. But for four hours, we discussed things that matter. So hopefully, we can continue, not necessarily in a six-hour format, but we can continue that template that we've kind of set and the example because that's, like I said, I'm still excited, like you, Mr. Morgan, about that data and what it shows for the future possibilities that we can do for all of our students. So, but again, thanks to the board. I appreciate the relationship that we have. I think we have a great working relationship, and I think it transponds into the one-team atmosphere that we have within our district. So I definitely appreciate that. Many of you have mentioned Read Across America. Want to say I appreciate all of the people that have participated in that. I know I've got one or two coming up that I will be doing. But I also want to submit congratulations to Cooper Middle School and Principal Vanessa Watkins, doing an awesome job out there, her and her staff. The state superintendent was scheduled to be at their school to conduct the ceremony to, for the state STEM certification. He was not able to be there, but congratulations to them nonetheless. They have six STEM teachers that have earned $50,000 in grants, including $27,000 from Boya, which is one grant. So that, they have been doing a yeoman's effort there. And it goes to mention, too, that we have a lot of schools that are getting STEM-certified. Three avenues: Cobb STEM-certified, state STEM-certified, and Saks Advanced is STEM-certified. And I just want everybody to understand that that's watching, this is not easy. It's not something that a school says, hey, let's get STEM-certified, and we check a couple of boxes, and it happens. It's a lot of work on the teachers. And for all of the schools that we have that are STEM-certified in one of the three areas, and some in all three, it's just a true testament to the hard work that our teachers go above and beyond to get that additional certification for their school. Along those same lines, we have had AP honors administered and to high schools. All 16 of our high schools are represented in one of the following five areas: AP access and support schools, AP merit schools, AP STEM schools, which we had 15, AP STEM achievement schools, which we had 11, and AP humanity schools, which we had 14. So we had all 16 of our high schools represented in those five AP honors awards, and that's a tremendous accolade for the district. And again, a testament to our teachers and also our principals that are leading our schools in the way that we would have them do that. So again, I appreciate it and appreciate the board. Again, it's Board Recognition Week, and if you need more of those certificates, you know, we can certainly get you additional ones. Of course, they don't come with frames, but, you know, we can get you additional ones. But in all seriousness, your efforts do not go unrecognized. The schools and all of our employees appreciate all that you do for our district. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I'll echo everything that's been said, but the one thought that occurred to me when I was listening to you is, is the word conductor occurred to me, but it can mean three different things. And it can mean we are conductors when it comes to helping keep the energy moving, but you, sir, have done a great job of being a conductor of the energy that helps drive us and motivate us. And actually, makes it fun to be on the board as a conductor on a train. It's, the train can't move until the conductor says all's ready to go and tells the engineer, fire up the engine and let's take off. And I think you've done a good job of that. And the other conductor, appealing to your musical background also, is that it takes practice, it takes work to get the sound and the instruments and the sections of whether it's orchestra, symphony, or whatever, to work. But that's another way that I see you as a conductor, where you're bringing out the best in us, and we're working together. And it may not be perfect the first time, but we're practicing and getting better every day. So thank you for your service. We're looking forward to another year. Without objection, we're adjourned.